All right, everybody. Hello and welcome to the City of Eureka Regular City Council Meeting, April 4th. We're glad you're all here. Nice to see you all. And we will open this meeting with a land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known as, or is known in the Wiat language as Jerujiji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And now we will open with the roll call.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
And Mayor Bergel.
Here.
Okay, and would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and can we get a report out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report out of closed session tonight.
Thank you. So we shall have some mayor's announcements. We're going to start with the Proclamations. And actually, if we could start with the Art and Culture Proclamation? And Calder is here to receive that. If you'd like to come forward. Thank you.
I understand this is for art and culture. How should I present this?
Just read it.
Whereas the City of Eureka celebrates the role that the arts and creativity play in helping us navigate the pandemic, amplify the need for racial equity, and highlight the power of the arts to change our lives for the better. And whereas Eureka Arts Organizations work in partnership to support the arts and creativity in Eureka as an essential part of our thriving community through services involving youth programs, public art initiatives, artists in schools, the Jump, yeah, Jumpstart Arts, thank you, artists in Juvenile Hall Program, Arts Alive, and numerous festivals and special events. And whereas the Ink People partners locally with the Eureka Arts and Culture Commission, and whereas there are numerous arts and culture organizations and sites throughout Eureka, including the Morris Graves Museum, the Da-Goroo? Da-Goroo Louis Wiat Cultural Center, thank you, the Clark Museum and Eureka Theater, the Art Association and Eureka Chinatown area, the Eureka Street Art Festival Murals, and many others. And whereas Eureka has one of only 14 cultural districts in the state of California. And whereas Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month of April begins, brings statewide awareness and advocacy that recognizes the crucial role of arts, culture, and creativity in the lives of everyone in California. And whereas the City of Eureka recognizes that the arts and creativity support student success and lifelong learning, provide key job skills, and bring joy to our community while strengthening our connections. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Kim Bergel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Arts, Cultural, and Creativity Month, and encourages everyone to celebrate the power of arts in our community. Okay, there I am. Hi. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I, thank you. I honestly feel a bit inadequate being up here accepting this, just considering how many wonderful artists and how many wonderful arts organizations there are in Eureka. And particularly over the last three years, it's just struck me how much the arts are woven through every part of our society, every part of our community, and how easy it is to not appreciate them until they're gone. And to be an artist in Eureka is to be appreciated. And I appreciate all of you. And now I need to go get to rehearsal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And next, we have our proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunications. Councilmember Castellano. Do you all like to come forward?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Okay, this is the City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, Sunday, April 9th through Saturday, April 15th, 2023. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Eureka Public Safety Communications Center. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety dispatchers of the Eureka Public Safety Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Kim Bergel and the Eureka City Council, declare the week of Sunday, April 9th to Saturday, April 15th, 2023, to be National Telecommunications Week in Eureka in honor of the dispatchers whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
Answering just over 98% of those calls within the first 10 seconds of the call coming into the center. Communications dispatchers created 70,946 calls for service for police and fire first responders. I can give you numerous statistics of what this communications center has accomplished over the last year, which is impressive. We are a busy center. Our numbers show that. What they do not show is the compassion, the heart, and the drive of every dispatcher here tonight and back at the communications center. It doesn't tell you about the dispatcher that provided successful instructions on how to clear the airway of a choking victim, dispatchers that gave successful CPR instructions, the dispatchers that got help on the way within seconds of receiving your call for help, and the dispatchers that day in and day out are there when the citizens of the city and first responders need them. During this last year, where I've had the honor of serving as the communications supervisor, I often wondered what makes a good leader. My goal was to motivate, inspire, support, and lead with honor and respect that I earned. I realized on December 20th that while all of that was important and still my goal, my greatest satisfaction as a leader has come by doing nothing. I arrived at the communications center shortly after the earthquake that morning and walked into the center. And when I opened the door, every console in the center had a dispatcher handling calls and responding to the needs of the community in a time of crisis. Within the first half hour of the earthquake occurring, every dispatcher had responded into the center and was working together as a team to take care of their first responders in the city. Later on, the chief was in the communications center, and after watching them for a moment, turned to me and said, "This is impressive. Good job." I was able to smile and say, "I did nothing. I did not call a single dispatcher in to respond in." They responded in immediately on their own. They came in crocs, they came in sweatpants and with hair hastily thrown up. They came in sick and worked their entire day shift with no complaint because they knew everyone had already worked that morning. They came in because they knew the city and coworkers needed them. They came in because we are a team and support each other, and because we are dispatchers and this is what we do. On that day, the communications center answered 581 phone calls that came into the center and created and dispatched 120 fire calls and 287 police calls for service. The team that did that is standing here today and back at the communications center and deserve all the recognition in the world. I have never been more proud than when I stood next to the chief that morning and watched this amazing team working to calm the chaos and did nothing to get them there. To each and every one of you, thank you for all you do every day. Keep up the amazing work, and here's to another year and all it holds. We are dispatchers, and we got this.
Okay, and our final proclamation is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I believe Amanda LeBlanc is here. Hi, come on up. City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2023. Whereas sexual assault affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds with public health and social justice implications for every person of Eureka. And whereas staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour services for survivors and their significant others, and encourage every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention education and awareness-raising programs throughout Humboldt and Delnart Counties. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assaults on their own, but can through collaboration and partnership, work together to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not revictimized. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Kim Bergel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and reaffirm our commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its vision: A World Without Violence.
Thank you so much for honoring Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the, me and my teammates and the survivors that we serve. We are a confidential and free service. We don't charge for any of the services for the survivors that we serve. In Humboldt County, we served 320 survivors and their families last year on what some would say is their worst day of their lives. And we are available 24 hours a day so that when someone is ready to heal, we will walk beside them on their journey, and that's an honor of my lifetime to be able to do that with them. We are currently seeking volunteers to join our team, so please visit our newly remodeled website. It no longer looks like a Verbo site. It actually looks like a site for a nonprofit. I'm super excited about it. The North Coast Rape Crisis Team are ncrct.org, and thank you so much for this. It's a real honor and privilege to be here.
Thank you. Nice to hear all those proclamations this evening. So I just have a couple of things that I wanted to share with you. So I had my regular meeting with the zoo, Sequoia Park Zoo, this last week, and wanted to remind folks that Brew at the Zoo is May 6th coming up. And then there's also something coming up April 15th. It's behind the scenes at the bear exhibit, and there's still opportunities for people to get tickets for that. We'd love to see you there. They're also looking for volunteers, so I may see you there myself. But it'll be really neat to be back behind there. I don't know if any of you've been to the zoo lately, but it's going to be amazing. So that's really wonderful. Second of all, it was the perilous plunge on Saturday, and we won. Redwood Coast Vixens, yes. So we won special recognition. I saved a shoe from, I swam out for a shoe that was going to be sinking in the bay. But you know what, friends? That is always such a great time. And if you haven't been, I really encourage you to go. And if you haven't participated, oh my gosh, it's a great event. It sponsors our local youth at the Discovery Museum, and anything we can do to support our kids, I think, is really important and really, it's an opportunity to bring us together too in a happy and kind of a fun way. So that's really great. And then I also got to go out one more time to support people into getting into the Warming Center. And I have to say that again, we're at about 1/3 out of everybody that is willing to go in, even without barriers. And I want to say that because I just want you to realize, or folks to realize, that we do work a lot to support people on the streets, and we cannot manufacture willingness. We can't make people go, even if it's 26 degrees, and it's very frustrating. But we are out there doing the work all the time, and I really want to thank our police team, our care team, and Uplift Eureka, who are just constantly out there working, trying to create health in that population. So much appreciation for that. And with that, we are going, oh, this is so exciting. We're going to be calling up Cassandra Hazeltine from the Delnart Film Commission to talk about the Forest Moon, Forest Moon Festival coming up.
I'm like the nervous bride getting married. I'm so excited.
Yes.
I think Pam has my presentation for you. So this is something that's been 10 years in the making, at least on our end. I know that other people have thought about it. I know that when we worked with City of Eureka and the Zoo Foundation, that they had talked about doing something similar. And they actually came to us when we were coming out of the pandemic and said, "Hey, you know, are you guys interested in doing a May 4th event?" And it was amazing to work with them. We're really excited about to see what you guys do next. And so we said yes, because we actually had done some research to create this event in 2019, and then, you know, we all know what happened in 2020. So we actually put it on pause, but we had reached out to Lucas Films and Disney back then, and this was something that we were moving towards, which is basically a celebration of filming of Return of the Jedi filming here 40 years ago. So at this point, they've already would have filmed here, because this is the release, the anniversary of the release of the movie. And you may know that they filmed up in Delnart County on private land, as well as Jedediah State Smith Park for the actual Ewok Village. And then at Cheatham Grove, they filmed at, they filmed in the speeder chase scene for Awesome, thank you. Somehow, something always goes wrong. We'll see if I can push the button right. And so we've known for a long time, and there's a lot of people who are into the Star Wars series, you know, which I'll talk about more in a minute, and there's a lot of people who contact our office and say, "Hey, where was the filming? Where did this take place?" And we've had a lot of film tourists who come out from out of the area to come check this out. So we've known for a while that we should probably do something to embrace that. It would be really exciting. It's really neat and fun. It obviously brings economic stimulus to the area, but we also realized there's a lot more to it. There's just Humboldt pride and Delnart pride of really feeling part of something that's so big, you know, and having a celebration locally. So we were super excited again when City of Eureka and the Sequoia Zoo Foundation reached out to us and said, "Hey, you want to do something for May the 4th?" And we went, "Great. Perfect stepping stone for us." Had this not been the 40th anniversary, we probably would have waited one more year before we launched this, but we are really excited to do this on the 40th. And so we're kind of considering this our dress rehearsal of trying to get buy-in in the community and helping the community, you know, create, it's a festival for the community made by the community. And then we're really excited to venture outside of the area in future years, but we already have outside people reaching out to us. So I don't know, this might get bigger than I meant it to go. So here we go. The, why Return of the Jedi? Why do a festival that's around that? So 62% of Americans are fans of Star Wars or declare that they feel that they are. The age span is 4 to 70. It basically is all ages, right? So families can come, anybody of any age, everybody, you know, has that, "Oh, I remember when" story about when they went. I remember going to Star Wars when I was like five, you know, or, no, I must have been 10. Sorry, I lied about my age just now. No, five, because of Star Wars. Okay, this one would have been 10. It's the second favorite movie of the series of all the feature films that they made, and we were Endor, and we were the only place where they did Endor. So those are actually shots from, photographs from when they were filming here in the region. So these are great photos. This is from the activity that we did. You could see Sequoia Park, where the city held a Jedi training course, which was utterly amazing, and some of the zoo portion where we had the over 21 version. We brought in costumers from out of the area, per Lucas Films, as well as people dressed up, and it was really great to see everybody engaging. So why film tourism? Movies can increase your, can bring in, popular movies can increase tourism by 25 to 300%. Sometimes the movie can outweigh the filming, I'm sorry, the film tourism can outweigh the filming that originally came in. So if they spent a million dollars filming the movie, you can have ongoing for years film tourism where it exceeds that. Hunger Games is one of those movies that brought in. Twilight is one of those movies, which you'll see in a minute. We refer to them as our role model of how to do film tourism. It also brings in not just economics, but it helps the community socially. You know, they feel pride in something. It triggers your emotions. People are known to travel to places purely based on they saw it in a movie. So it's definitely something that, that sticks with us. So an example of film tourism is Twilight, the Twilight series. And this is a great example because they actually didn't even film in Forks, Washington. The books take place there, and they completely embraced and took in having a Twilight Festival because they had so many fans. And so they did everything from decorating the chamber to the house that the book mentions as, it was the role model for the house for the lead. They put a sign there. They have a four-day festival. They have a parking spot at the hospital for the doctor in the movie that you can go and take a picture with. I mean, they've really embraced this. They're very smart. And the filming actually filmed in Oregon, so it wasn't even there. And yeah, it's incredible. So this has been really kind of our role model of how to embrace something that was here. So what does the Forest Moon Festival look like? We're asking three things. We're asking that everywhere in the community, in Humboldt and Delnart Counties, that we theme out, that, it's kind of like we've created a holiday, Fourth of July, if you will, where everybody dresses up and wears, you know, something, and they decorate for that. And they might create, like, for example, an IP-friendly promotional material, like if you had a restaurant or a bar, you see the Yoda. You're not stepping on Lucas Films by selling that because it's not actually Yoda. It's not theirs. It's an influence, but everybody recognizes it as Yoda. I love that cocktail. I hope someone takes that, does that. And then we're asking the second tier is we're asking existing events to theme out as well. So Farmer's Market, Arts Alive, Storytime at the Library, any of those things that are already happening, embrace Star Wars slash Return of the Jedi with your event that weekend. And then participating businesses like Brick and Mortar, restaurants, pop-ups, food trucks, community partners. Obviously, we're hoping that City of Eureka will do the Jedi Training Course again, and that the zoo will do their event. And they've been our role model. They're the ones, the example that we've been showcasing to everybody because they were a great partnership and really did it right. And these are all pictures from the events that we held in May 4th of, what was that Shannon, 2022?
Last year.
Yeah, yeah. I can't remember what year I'm in. So the film commission's part. We helped with, you know, we're helping present this. We're the promoter. We're coming, helping with the theme, the IP rules. We work with Lucas Films. We've been on the phone with them several times, making sure that we have all the rules, and creating and distributing collateral materials to our participants. We'll be promoting and creating the map, the schedule of events, and doing local and outside marketing. And as I mentioned earlier, this is more of our dress rehearsal of getting everybody the first time to do it, you know, this big version. So we'll probably focus more on local marketing and some outside, but we really want to try to get everybody locally to be involved. And then sponsoring, we will do four screenings of Return of the Jedi. One of them will be at Sequoia Park again that evening, we, on Saturday evening of the weekend. We look like we're going to be doing one in Garberville. We're hoping to do one in Arcata with the university, and then we'll be doing one at Keller Park in Delnart. So we have four screenings throughout that weekend. We're also bringing up costumers from out of town. We've got about 20 storm troopers from LA coming. Wouldn't that be amazing at Arts Alive to be marching down Old Town? And we have some Rebels, and there's two other groups that we're working with. And so we're finding out who's going to actually be coming from out of the area, per Lucas Films again. So they are great because they dress up and they do the whole GARP, and they actually pay their own way and take care of themselves. So if you do run into a costumer that comes from out of the area that's part of our, part of the festival, you know, thank them because they spend their own money to do it. It's pretty amazing. So yeah, we're really excited. We're hoping that people come celebrate the 40th anniversary of Return of the Jedi. We have a website, forestmoonfestival.org. We have Facebook and Instagram. You can find out more information. If anybody wants to sign up to be on the map and on the calendar, you do have to sign up. There's a whole vendor packet. There's different versions. If you're just theming out your restaurant, we'll put you on a list. If you're adding an actual activity, like City of Eureka is doing, you know, if they do the, the event again in the park, then you fill out a different version of the form. But it's all on there. We released it yesterday, and we're really excited.
Thank you. It is very exciting. Do you have any questions or comments? Councilmember Fernandez?
More of a comment. When is, when is this taking place? What are the days?
Oh, sorry. It was on the first screen. That's June 2nd and 3rd. So kind of like Friday Eve, you know, into Saturday, and then, we didn't think that we could handle three days. But we needed nights because we are doing nighttime screenings, you know, two of them are outside. So we needed a couple nights there where we can do the outside screening of Return of the Jedi.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's soon. It's real quick.
It is really quick.
I would suggest that we dress up as members of the Jedi Council.
Oh, please do. Please do.
We'll take that under advisement.
I call Mace Windu.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Cassandra. That was wonderful. Save the date, you guys. Wonderful. All right, so we're going to move to Board and Commission Reports. We have none. Public Comment Period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So come on up, James. Welcome back.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I haven't been here in a minute, so I've never met the two new council members. Congratulations on being up here. I'm here to talk about your promotion of these drag queen shows with sexualized content for children and this so-called hate speech resolution. Nobody had a problem with these drag queen shows till you started pressing them on children. So, you know, about the hate speech thing. Warning parents and community members about drag queen shows with sexualized content for children is not hate, it's love. We have a First Amendment in this country, and the Supreme Court has already ruled on what hate speech is. As long as it doesn't threaten somebody's life, it's not hate speech. What is hate speech, though, is for the so-called Pride community and its supporters to call us bigots for trying to protect children. Nobody hates the LBGt community. We just want them to leave children out of their sexualized drag queen shows. It's not family-friendly now and never will be. Devil horns and dildos are not something that children need to see while a grown man pretends to be a woman and twerk in front of them. Why is it Satanism and drag queen shows go hand in hand? Even the so-called Pride Community event at the Jefferson Center, they were selling portraits of Satan and openly worshiping Satan and mocking God. They are trying to play the victim card. While they're not, why they, while they not only indoctrinate children, but they're recruiting children. There's only one reason they fight so hard to involve children in their sexualized drag queen shows, and anybody with any common sense knows that reason. It's to groom them. It's not illegal to protect children and warn of danger, but that's exactly what the so-called Pride Community wants you to do. They want you to silence citizens that are trying to warn the rest of the community. Some people think it's innocent, but they don't know what they're talking about. They've either never been to one, or they like what's going on at these shows. Either way, for you to try to pass an ordinance against the pastor and his sign, and I'm talking about the Ferndale pastor, that warns people is illegal. Like I said, we already have a First Amendment that spells that out clearly. Maybe watch some footage of what goes on at these drag queen shows, including the one that just went on in Ferndale where they had devil horns and dildos. You think that's inappropriate? I don't. They're passing laws in other states to ban drag queen shows for children, and as they should. It's called common sense and morality. You know, I hope more people have that. And you want to talk about hate speech, this is trending on the internet right now. And it's transgender, and they say, "Kill Christ cucks. Behead Christ cucks. Roundhouse kick a Christ cuck into the concrete. Slam duck a Christ cuck baby into the trash can. Crucify filthy Christ cucks. Defecate in a Christ cuck's food. Launch Christ cucks into the sun."
Thank you, James.
Am I done?
You're done. Thank you so much.
Your hair looks nice, and thanks for the perilous plunge, where everybody that went in there, and that water's cold. Your hair looks nice and thanks for the perilous plunge where everybody that went in there, I know that water's cold.
Yes, it is.
I don't want to leave that there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I do not.
Okay. All right, we'll close the public comment period and we will go to our public hearings. The first of which is the C to F parcel surplus. Principal Planner Kristen Getz will be doing the presentation.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening are the surplusing of the C to F parcels. The C to F parcels are located on the north side of Eureka and consist of three parcels and a portion of the D Street right of way. The parcels are located just south of the boardwalk and extend from C Street almost to F Street. Starting at the west end, the parcel located at the northeast corner of First and C Streets is approximately 1.3, excuse me, 1.13 acres or 48,500 square feet. And at various times in the past, it's contained residential apartments and boarding houses, warehouses, the Booner Warehouse and the Inside Track Retail Store. At least 45 low income dwellings will be required on this site through the RFP, which is on your agenda for later this evening. The second site is the parcel located at the northeast corner of the intersection of First and D Streets and it's approximately 0.22 acres or if we add in the D Street right of way, it's approximately 0.3 acres. With the right of way, the parcel is approximately 13,000 square feet and contained a saloon, which eventually became a beer and wine warehouse. And at least five very low income dwelling units will be required on this site. The last parcel is located between D and F Streets and is immediately adjacent to and south of the boardwalk. The parcel is approximately 1.34 acres or 58,400 square feet and contained warehouses for feed, groceries and fishing gear, along with wharfs and a fish packing plant. At least 45 very low income dwellings will be required on this site, again through the RFP, which is on your agenda for later this evening. The City Council must find whether the parcels are necessary for the city's use. The parcels are of such size and shape to allow development of uses permitted in the zone in which it is located. And the disposition of the property is in conformance with the government code. As discussed in your staff report, although the sites will be used for housing, housing does not meet the definition of agency use under the Surplus Lands Act. So the property is not required for the city's use according to the Surplus Lands Act. The size and shape of all three parcels can allow for development of housing along with coastal dependent, coastal related and visitor serving uses. There are also several goals and policies in the general plan which support development of housing on these sites. And in order to move forward with that development, the city must declare the site surplus. At the March 13th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the Commission adopted a resolution recommending Council declare the parcel surplus. And staff now is recommending Council adopt a resolution finding the project qualifies for a Class 12 exemption from SEQA and declaring the C to F parcels surplus. And I have a suggested motion whenever you're ready.
Thank you, do we have questions? No questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing for public comment. Would anybody care to comment on this issue? You might want to just line up on this side, it looks like there might be a few people. But come on up, Mr. Callison.
This is live, okay, good. I'm Tim Callison, I'm a citizen of Eureka, but I'm here on the behalf of Security National. It's come aware today that in 1995, the city took control of the C to F Street properties. In 2016, you guys did a Phase 2 study. 16 sites were performed, which means that this hasn't completely been delineated or characterized. The produced, with those 16 sites were performed, they produced results of high arsenic, cadmium, lead, benzene and motor oil. Just trying to figure out, you know, how, I know that when we do our testing, we have to report them immediately to our entity's water board and then upload it to GeoTracker. GeoTractors where the information becomes public. Those hit today, that was done seven years ago. How and why did the city hold on to that information for seven years before bringing it to the forefront? Just thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Come on up, welcome.
Thank you, I'm Dolores Velotini. 61 years ago, my husband, first husband Ray and I purchased the Jansen Building and two of the buildings adjacent to it. Ray was born and raised in Old Town, this was before the area was designated for redevelopment. We restored all the buildings and sizably retrofitted the two masonry buildings. The city's proposed use of the waterfront property for low income housing to solve its homeless challenges is offensive and does not conform to the Coastal Act's goals and requirements. The California Coastal Commission has the condition that any development or use of waterfront property in the coastal zone should be consistent with the Coastal Act's policies, which include protecting and enhancing public access to and along the coast. The Coastal Act defines visitor serving uses as providing recreational and educational opportunities for the public, such as hotels, restaurants, parks and other similar facilities, not low income or sub-low housing. Indeed, other properties more suitable for housing for the homeless provide access to social and healthcare services, public transportation and security. The property should be zoned to be compatible with the existing Old Town uses. The location should have the support of the local community to minimize the potential for conflicts. Old Town is where our visitors come to see our city. If the City Council is unwilling to recognize the duty to protect the historic character of Old Town, I hope the Coastal Commission will, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry friends, as decorum and to keep the time flowing, if you want to do a hands, but please don't clap or comment on what people say. Thank you so much, it just helps people to feel more comfortable as well. Hi, John.
My name is John Ash and I'm a retired architect and a newly minted film producer. So I wanted to start by saying, I've been involved with this property since 2003 and under City Manager David Tyson. And I've gone through several city managers that have had all different ideas as to what this site could be used for, some of them creative, some of them not so creative, but at least they had ideas. This is the first city manager, Miles Slattery, that wanted to give it away. The, and I don't understand why that is. We had a project that we brought to the city at back in year 2010 that for Marriott Hotel, 117 units. We had the approval of the Coastal Commission with some conditions that were all acceptable. I did some analysis on that at the time and now I've updated it. Assuming a conservative room rate of $150 a night and an average occupancy of 70%, the total room revenue for the hotel would exceed $7,598 annually. And that's at 70% of occupancy. The city's current TOT tax would be for that annually at 12% would be $911,000 annually of income. That could be used to solve a lot of challenges for providing housing for the city. The other issue, so that's an opportunity that I think has not been looked at. And I know that not only the Marriott, but other hotels would be interested in coming here. But that's not been examined as the highest and best use. The other issue is if any of you have been out kayaking in that area along the, in a reach, you'll see that sea rise is, comes right up to the boardwalk 12 inches from the top of it. So I don't think that that issue has been considered either. So I have other things, but I will submit those in writing. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Slattery and City Council, my name is Allison Holland and I reside in the city limits. I am here tonight representing Security National Properties located at 323 Fifth Street in Eureka, California. I'd like to address this item about the surplus parcels from C to F Street. We understand at Security National Properties that the city is under significant pressure to comply with the state housing requirements. And we support the city in finding ways to meet those housing needs for our community. However, we cannot stand by your proposal to reshape our downtown in a way that is short sighted. The waterfront is one of our city's greatest assets and we need to make sure that it's safe and accessible for everyone. While you're saying that you'll put retail on the street level and multifamily housing above, there are numerous flaws with your plan. First, it is our understanding that these lots may very well be contaminated and have sawdust up to seven feet down and other toxic fill making it impossible to build housing and retail buildings without major remediation and cost. Secondly, how can you unequivocally state that there is no habitat for wildlife, no wetlands, no protected fauna that you may harm without performing an environmental assessment? Furthermore, by going multiple stories high, you are ruining and impacting the view shed for those visitors, residents and workers downtown who value the waterfront and it's, and our beautiful bay. Security National Properties is wanting and willing to buy all three parcels and turn them into a park that will be accessible for all of the residents and visitors to downtown. This will further the vision of a beautiful and accessible Eureka waterfront. Let's turn these parcels into a park and take away the controversies. Please table this agenda item until you have heard our full offer and thoroughly assessed the pros and cons of using our waterfront property and our gem of our town for housing. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Jenna Katsos, I am a Eureka resident and business owner and I have an office in the Old Town area. I am here tonight in support of any housing projects that you might bring forward. I don't think I could think of one that I wouldn't think would be something that we need in Eureka. I think everyone understands that we have a housing crisis that we're facing and at some point, we need to build housing to fix that crisis. And we could spend all day coming up with every single little problem that we might see with every single proposal that will come in front of you. Or we can finally prioritize our friends and neighbors who need this housing. Low income is not a dirty word, it's not a bad thing. Everyone deserves housing and I think that a lot of us would be alarmed by what the income level is that is qualified as low income. A lot of us fall into that category, we all need housing. I'm excited to see the multi-use proposals that will come up for this space. I think that it will enliven this area and bring more people downtown to visit the restaurants and stores that these buildings will house. I look forward to that, I look forward to what it will do to the city that I love and I look forward to the business that it will bring in that will then benefit me personally and the business that I own. There are a lot of wonderful things that can come from this and I'm really excited to see how you vote on this. I look forward to your support for housing as we move forward as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Welcome.
Hi all, Tom Wheeler, I am a Eureka City resident. As you can hear from my voice, I'm sick, but don't worry, I'm not contagious, so I felt safe to be here. But I'm here because of the depth and the severity of our housing crisis. It's very important that we take actions like this to create housing in our community, particularly low and very low income housing, which is often very difficult to construct. I thank city staff for their work in moving this and other housing projects forward in our city. This is the right thing to do, this is what we need in our community. Tonight, in this agenda item and in others, I think if you ask yourself, what can I do to support housing construction in Eureka? If that is your lodestar for tonight's discussion, you will make the right decisions. Thank you so much for supporting housing.
Hello. Good evening, my name is Minnie Wolf, I live in Eureka. And I'm very concerned about the parking situation. I am challenged, as you can see, getting around and when I first came here, I did a lot more in and about stuff. But currently, when I go to Old Town and Downtown, trying to find a parking place so I can do what I want to do, I leave if I cannot find a parking place and it's really, really frustrating. So if you want to get a burrito from the burrito place near this parking lot on D Street, you can't find a parking place, I guess you just leave because there's nowhere to park and you can't get your burrito. If you want to go down to F Street and go to one of the businesses that are still there, you can't find a parking place, you go away. You go to the Vance Hotel building and you want to try that new little restaurant that's on the ground floor, there's no parking, so you leave. So I'm very frustrated that this city would give up, consider giving up 12 parking places and then tagging them as surplus. That word is just, boggles my mind, how could it be surplus when there is no current place to park? And then, and then you want to make a decision to not do SEQA? Hello? SEQA is there to protect all the parties. So why wouldn't you do the California Environmental Quality Act? Why wouldn't you do that? It doesn't even make any sense. You know, I'm confused about your decision process and the way you think things through. I think maybe some common sense has been lost in the last few years since I've come to a city council meeting. Anyway, it's not a prudent business decision to exempt the SEQA process. It's just boggles my mind. But you need to think about the whole picture. And one of the other things, it's like the City Council doesn't want the businesses to survive in Old Town and Downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Minnie.
Hi. My name is Tia Hempstead, and I have three legally permitted Airbnbs in Old Town. I have had many tourists cancel or stay before they even get to my property just from driving in the neighborhood due to feeling unsafe from the issues of transience in the area. I believe these cancellations will increase if very low-income housing gets put here, decreasing income to me and the city. It would also decrease everyone's property values in Old Town. This is not a place for such housing, as they should be near better resources for them, which there is none in Old Town. No nearby park to take their kids to, no affordable shopping, groceries, or restaurants for them nearby. Also, not much transportation resources. Beautiful Old Town, Beautiful Old Town needs this parking area for events such as Friday Night Market, Farmer's Market, Arts Alive, et cetera, as well as daily business use. Even these photos show at least twenty-five cars, the photos that they showed in the presentation, twenty-five at least cars parked there the day that the photo was taken, most likely due to the current lack of no parking. We have so many empty buildings in Old Town due to businesses suffering from this economy, but mainly from theft and vandalism, which has gotten worse and most likely won't improve with the addition of low-income housing. Adding business storefronts won't help this until we can clean up this area. This will also deter tourists, which is part of the top ten things to do in Humboldt. Visit Beautiful Old Town, and we need to support it and keep it a tourist attraction. Low-income housing in Old Town would require more police force. Since it's a local and tourist favorite spot, safety is a huge concern. However, we don't have the resources for more police. If locals don't feel safe, they will stop shopping here and start, I'm sorry, they will start shopping more online, and more businesses will end up closing. I would be interested to know the statistics of the influx of very low-income people and transients moving here, because we don't have the resources to help them with the underlying issues of their mental health. Adding these buildings will not only take away from the parking, but hiding the waterfront will completely take away from the desire to use the waterfront, which is what it was created for, to act as an economic stimulant by taking advantage of the beautiful view shed the Humboldt Bay has to offer. Complementing historic Old Town, while you understand the need for low-income housing, there must be another location outside of Eureka's main economic driving center for tourists and attractions. For example, Medicaid, Arts Alive, Friday Night Market, et cetera. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Tia. Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Hempstead. Sorry, haven't actually attended one of these random H-Cog meetings in City of Trinidad, mostly. So I own a, my wife, a twelve-unit mixed-use complex building, eleven residential's, one commercial office space located on First and D. The, upon purchase and speaking with the previous owner, they brought up In-Lu parking. I see in the staff report that it was pad and that it was stopped in the sixties, it stated. He stated he was charged somewhere around forty-eight, approximately a thousand dollars for not having the parking accessible, so he had to buy so many spots out of the, for the units. I was curious what would happen with those funds. Secondly, I understand that there is a need for low income. I grew up in an impoverished, small community just north of here. Very aware of the housing situation in Humboldt County. My family goes back generations all the way to Metta Village on the Clamath. It's, I'm from here. I'm very aware. And I believe we need the help. Low, very low-income housing isn't a dirty word, but there is a place for things. And unfortunately, I personally believe that that particular place, being the economic drivers, historical town as discussed, whenever I go down there, there isn't parking. Arts Alive, you guys remember the big crab with the field flyer, right? I mean, it was going off. They had EPD down there controlling traffic. Homelessness, substance abuse, mental health, that's a major issue that our county has to look at and try to find solutions, pathway forward with. Unfortunately, EPD is very busy with stuff. I think statistically speaking, if you were to look at the very low-income housing that's developed in Samoa, I also own a company that interacts with them constantly, and the sheriff's office is out there daily. Every day I go out, there's a couple of units going out of there. If I interact there, I'm constantly pulling vehicles out of there. I don't, I own a tow company. And unfortunately, the substance abuse and the mental health issues has us dealing with a lot of needles and issues like that that we have to deal with. But for this particular area, I think we need to look at it and try to find an economic driver or a place of recognition. At the beginning of your guys' meeting, you wanted to acknowledge the We'at people. Have you guys offered the place of surplus land to them to maybe have a cultural, educational spot? Last time I had this talk with them, they were still looking at land, trying to get acquisition for land that was taken from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
I don't know why it seems such a long ways from over there to here. But good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Robert Maxon. I sent you a letter on this item, and for the sake of clarity, I think I'd like to read a portion of it now to the public. I'm going to start by quoting a past editorial from the Time Standard. It went like, "Our city has one distinctive asset that distinguishes it from the places like Ukiah, Redding, or Chico. This, of course, is our beautiful bay. Waterfront land is a finite and scarce resource. It should be reserved either for a public or for water-related uses, especially support for facilities for the fishing fleet. Now, it seems that the need for affordable housing has our city searching for convenient ways to comply with state housing mandates. But in my opinion, turning our shoreline into an affordable housing development is an ill-advised plan. A high concentration of residential development tends to privatize the waterfront and intrude upon and limit public use. This new precedent would surely deprive the citizens of Eureka access to this beloved asset. What would our citizens prefer? Not surprisingly, participants in the 2015 city-sponsored CDF Waterfront Design Charrette overwhelmingly preferred a plan that included more open space and outdoor recreational opportunities. I would urge the city council to ask one crucial question. Why does this project for affordable housing need to front the bay? If the answer isn't completely convincing, why not seek another location? We can wait a little longer to do it right." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Midge Catching. I live in Eureka. I live downtown. And I just want to talk about this spot. For me, I've been here thirty-four years now. And it has always been viewed as a natural gathering place for the citizens of Eureka and also for tourists. We had, Robert just referred to the Design Charrette, which was, went over several days, was extremely well-attended. I think, Kim, you went to it. And there were a lot of really good ideas presented on that. None of them was a housing project, and I don't care about the income. Housing, if you're going to put any there, and I don't oppose a small amount, but it needs to be a small amount of what goes there. Otherwise, that is a resident neighborhood. Not anything like a public gathering place anymore. Just for comparison's sake, I live right behind Lodge in Eureka, which is on H Street. And that is just a little bit over an acre that that sits on. It has forty-six units on it, and it's two-story. So if we're planning on putting a total of what it looks to me like is ninety-five units on these three pieces of property, there's not going to be a lot of gathering going on. There's just going to be a big residential neighborhood, which will look like a giant fence between the citizens of Eureka and their bay. We need to consider other spots for this. I don't care about the income level of the people who would be living there. That's not your main. It's just not a residence neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Greg Pearson, and I do live in Eureka. My partners and I invested in the Eureka Boardwalk, having developed the Bayfront One property. And we continue to own and manage that property and the gravel lot on the west side of F Street. We're in the early design stages of a similar development on that gravel lot that will truly be a mixed-use complex benefiting all of our community members. We have a significant interest in what happens on the remaining boardwalk property, not only because of our investment, because we're also citizens of Eureka. We desire to see the boardwalk be a draw to visitors and us locals alike for years to come. On Sunday, my wife and I ran into some travelers from Vancouver. They were going to spend only one night here in Eureka on their way down to San Diego, but they decided to stay an extra night. And let me tell you, those extra nights add up to our hospitality, for our hospitality industry. And a vibrant boardwalk will enhance that opportunity even more for them and for the rest of us. In addition, our own citizens will benefit from a truly unique asset. I don't think a big housing development on the boardwalk is going to make people go down there and stay an extra night. I just don't think it's going to happen. But all joking aside, I understand the pressure that you guys are under to meet the city's regional housing needs assessment, which is dictated by Sacramento. As you know, we had this discussion over the downtown parking lots not so long ago. At that time, the community was made aware of the issue, and it responded. And we found additional land, saving three of our critical parking lots. As a result, everyone benefited. The city secured more housing, housing units, which were located closer to essential services. And while some of the business community was able to save their parking lots. I believe the same process should be attempted again for the Eureka Boardwalk. The boardwalk is too unique of an asset for you to develop it primarily into very low-income housing. And yet, it's important we build this housing. There are a number of parcels within the city that can potentially accommodate that. I've spoken with the Arkleys, and I've spoken with the Eureka City Schools. Rob and Sherry have around eighty acres. Eureka City School has about nine acres that's available. In the recent past, we spent significant time with the public process to create a vision for the boardwalk, and I don't think your proposed action was a result of those efforts. I request the city pause this process tonight and engage the citizens of Eureka to assist with solving the city's needs here. You can certainly host a few gatherings with local realtors, landowners, developers, consultants, and the broader community with the goal of finding a better way to meet our housing requirements that will conform to the Coastal Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Dustin Taylor. I live in Eureka. And I own Dick Taylor Chocolate, and we just, you know, did a lot of money down there and developed that area. And in all of our plans, you know, we spoke with cash and saw so many changes that were going to happen. And, you know, all of them had open space and looked like parks. And, you know, building along First Street, that made sense. We built along First Street, that just like continues Second and First, Old Town. All along that waterfront was open and clear, and it just, you know, fit our vibe. And what, we have big plans for things to come, being down there on the water. You know, we'd love to sponsor a big regatta and bring all these events to bring the community. We're a big part of the community. We play in a band here. We do all this kind of stuff locally. And I know we need housing, and like other people said, I don't care what level of housing, low income or this. It's just, I know we need housing. But I do feel that that is, especially on that parcel of land that's kind of narrow right up against the water and the whole boardwalk. I know before we've done part of the plans, we're not shading the boardwalk and, you know, keeping buildings away from there. And I think it's very important that we keep that clear. And like I say, there's, a lot of these other real businessmen know a lot more about property that's available. I'm not just pretending to be business people, but, but in that, there's also a lot of, you know, you drive through Eureka, and there's a lot of blight. There's a lot of terrible buildings that need new buildings on them, that need housing. And it's unfortunate that we're kind of at this spot that we're thinking, right on the water, our prettiest spot in all of the town, we're gonna build houses there and block the view and shade the waterfront. So from my standpoint, I was disappointed and kind of shocked that it came up in this way. I know we need development, and I don't know, you know, if HSU or somebody with a lot of money's got this big plan for that. From our standpoint, if it could be on that First Street side, I think that's great. We need some development on there, but, but just kind of blocking that with housing, I think is a kind of a short-sighted view as well. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. You guys really do a great job. And yeah, come down, get some chocolate. Bye.
Thanks for being here.
I'm the proud father of the speaker before last. I'm Hank Pearson, majority owner of the Eureka Mall and some apartments in Eureka. As I understand it, the city's problem, the city is required by the state to build so many units for low and very low-income residents. And to muddy the waters, having a non-compliant housing element, I understand the city must approve, approve the proposed housing developments regardless of local zoning as defined by the so-called builder's remedy. However, this very well may not negate the California Coastal Commission's regulations on these parcels. The builder's remedy, which I believe says that cities not compliant must approve projects as long as twenty percent of the units are set aside for low-income households. In this case, I guess it's a hundred percent low-income households. I believe this means the city's zone restrictions and height, density, and any other conditions couldn't be enforced on these parcels in question. Just because the state, in all its wisdom, is trying to force a popular policy doesn't mean it's doable or right. Checking the internet, it appears there are many cities in California experiencing the same problem. To take a potentially future development of our prime bayside property for low-rent housing is definitely not good planning, and regardless of the state's demands. Sincerely, Hank Pearson. I have copies for all of you.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this item. When, oh, I'm Kenny Carsel. I'm here representing Security National Properties tonight. When we were first noticed and attended the public hearings for these parking lot developments, we were asking where we would park our vehicles, and this lot, the CDF lot, was the answer that we were given for where we are to park. So I just want to pose the question, where are we supposed to park now? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Micah Starr. I currently live in Arcata, but I work in Eureka. I love the city. I wasn't intending to give my I wasn't intending to give my comment tonight, but I was inspired by just, I guess, the range of opinions and how much care we're all putting into this proposal. I guess I have just a short comment, which is more of a vision, I guess, for the property. I heard a lot of people say that they're concerned about parking and that they're concerned about shading, about the boardwalk becoming too cold or just negative impacts. I would, I think it's good to take time with this process, certainly make sure that it's, you know, that we're doing what's going to be really effective. I just, I think that having the housing be focused on what I would consider a priority being our elders, particularly our we-are elders. If that were used for the property, since it's overlooking Tulawat Island as well, possibly we-are elders who may not have cars, so that there wouldn't be an addition to the parking problem. And that there would also, in the original plan, to be mixed-use for businesses as well, so that everyone can, so that the space can be used for many different purposes that will fit with all of our vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Adam Dick. I am a homeowner here in Eureka and I do own part of Dick Taylor Chocolate on First Street in Eureka. And as my business partner said earlier, we spent a lot of money and time in getting this project done, and we are absolutely thrilled to be down there. It's a wonderful spot. It's been really well-received. And I do want to thank the city for everybody's help with getting that all pushed through. With that, I do spend a lot of time looking at those properties, walking around those properties, thinking a lot about those properties. And there's a lot of space there. You know, when I look, it's expansive and it's vast. And I think that that's why what you guys are looking at are three parcels. And this was kind of my thought when I spoke to the Planning Commission. I'm not sure why we feel like all three of them are surplus. I certainly feel like the properties on First Street seem to fit with the look there to be developed and to have retail and housing. The third parcel that borders the boardwalk, to me, is very, very different. The character of that, the activities that I see going on there daily are very, very different. I think we have this impression that there's the riffraff and the tweakers are all hanging out there. But I see people feeding the birds all day long. I see people walking their dogs all day long. I see FedEx guys taking their lunch breaks there. And so I see the citizens of Eureka or the community already using that space. I think it's really valuable. And I think also, as we look at the need for a parking component down there, at least to make people feel like they're not getting rid of all the parking, I think there's some value to that, too. So, I mean, my suggestion would be to not surplus the parcel that's right on the water. Let's figure out a better way that continues to enhance the user experience down there on the waterfront, rather than cutting off a piece of property that I feel like people are already actively using. It seems to me to be a compromise. We get a little bit of open space. We get a beautiful view of the boardwalk. We don't get any shading. We get a lot of opportunity to develop a waterfront park or museum or whatever it may be. And we still are able to capture some of the housing on those pieces of property. And then we've only got to find a little bit somewhere else. So those are some of my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but it's hard to stand in line.
You're fine. Welcome.
I'm Anita Helficker, Mayor and Council. I've lived on the borefront for thirteen years in the Bayfront One property. I think I've seen a lot going on down there. I sent a list to the city and I have not heard one of my questions answered tonight. I don't know, who am I supposed to approach about these answers? What percent of the city-owned land is the C to the F parcel? How much of this land from C to F is owned by the city for the rest of what the city owns? Who would own the proposed building for this affordable housing? Will that owner pay property tax or bed tax? Do you have the Coastal Commission approval for this property to be affordable housing? I have not had an answer for any of these things. Nobody's answered these questions. I don't even know what the qualifications are or what's the requirements are for the person applying for affordable housing. What person has to have what? What do they have to have? What are the benefits for the retail stores, the restaurants, and tourism in Old Town and Eureka? Of course, we've tried and tried. My husband's family's been in business one-hundred-and-twenty-one years here. Do you think we've developed very much tourism in that time? I haven't seen all that much. We don't, like several of the speakers before say, that there has not been a, people don't come to stay because they're concerned about coming down there. And of course, parking is always the issue. Anyway, I would like my answers, I would like to know what the answers are. I sent this to you Monday and nobody's sent me an answer. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Cameron and I'm a resident of Eureka. I just want to talk about the gravity of the decision that you guys are making. This decision will shape the downtown area for fifty to a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty years to come. So please don't take that lightly. Please, you know, do the research. It seems like we've spent a lot of time since the boardwalk was constructed, talking about possible uses for these properties. And since the city acquired the properties, it just seems like we're really rushing this all of a sudden, when it was, you know, a lot of good options were talked about and this really wasn't one of them. So please, please take a minute to think about this. And I urge you to table the decision and talk with locals and see if there's any other options. Because this will shape the downtown area for years to come. And we need to do that in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Evening, Council. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but sitting here listening to everybody just brings it all back. In nineteen sixty-eight or sixty-nine, my dad was ready to break ground on a new restaurant on one of these parcels at the foot of C Street. Within a short amount of time, things changed and the city came forth and said, we own part of that property. And it ended up in a fifteen-year legal battle, which I believe the City of Eureka ended up paying. So what I want to say to you, Council, is none of you are probably aware of the depth of it. It is all available at HSU in their library, or you can Google Trouble on the Waterfront. You can Google LaZio versus City of Eureka. It will give you a lot of insight on the history of this piece. And this piece has been sitting empty pretty much ever since. And that's just sad. And another thing I want to say, I went to those charettes a few years ago and it was the first time I had hope. I had real hope. I thought something was actually finally going to happen down there. And I had hope because the community came together. There were hundreds of people in that Warfinger Building, tabling, drawings. It was fun. It was real. And what happened to all of that? It's gone now and now we've been presented with housing. I don't feel that's what the community wants on those parcels. I don't know what is the right thing. You know, I can tell you economically, what the city lost with the lawsuit against my dad's plan was in the millions of tax revenue for this city. And it's your job, that's part of your, I mean, you're running a business. And those numbers matter. So as you look at what you want to put down there, please do your research, do your homework, talk to the community, ask Miles where the charettes are from three, four, or five years ago, because amazing, there was amazing ideas put forth by the people who voted for you. So take your time. Nothing's changed since nineteen sixty-nine. It's not going anywhere anytime soon. Let's do it right. Let's make everyone proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Is there anyone else here in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move over to Zoom and I see Jonathan Padilla.
Thank you, I'm the Mayor and City Council. I am the Director of Community Services at Redwood Coast Regional Center. And our regional center serves approximately two thousand people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Humboldt County, and many of whom live inside the city boundaries of Eureka. We have approximately seventy staff that work in our office located at the historic Vance Hotel in downtown. And the people that we serve, we serve them through the lifespan, starting from birth through the full course of their life, including many families with children. Most of the individuals that we serve rely on Social Security as their primary source of income and therefore are considered extremely low-income and are among the most in need of affordable housing. RCRC is in support of the city's declaration for the C to F parcels that are within sight of our Old Town location at the Vance Hotel, so that these sites can be used for the development of more affordable housing for all of the residents there in Eureka. And we're particularly in support of it because it is within close proximity to public transportation, many of the walking and biking trails, within a few miles of local grocery store shops and other amenities that can be accessed by walking and also the other medical facilities located within the facility. So thank you for your time and for putting together the proposal.
Thank you. Next up, Althea Christensen.
Hey there. So I would like to urge the Council to disregard Security National's fake concerns about soil contamination. They're not being made in good faith. Security National has owned the balloon tract for almost twenty years without doing any cleanup on it. I have no reason to believe that they would clean up and make a park out of this property either. You know, I remember when the waterfront was warehouses, you know, behind Dick Taylor Chocolate, all the way down to where the Warfinger Building was, was warehouses. And, you know, it was fine. You know, having a two- or three-story mixed-use development is not a bad thing. You know, if you say you think the waterfront should be cafes and restaurants and retail stores and, you know, aquatic-serving businesses, that's fine. That can still happen. Just put a floor or two of apartments above them. You know, that's what this is. You know, and like the previous speaker said about the people he serves being low-income, seniors on Social Security are very low-income. There are people sitting in the audience right now who are or will be low-income very soon. You know, they are going to need affordable housing. You know, when my dad was alive, he had caregivers who came to take care of him every day that drove from McKinleyville or Fortuna. And those people made minimum wage. You know, we need our caregivers, our students, you know, the CNAs in the nursing homes need good, affordable places to live. You know, ten percent of Eureka's children have lead poisoning. Lead poisoning damages their brains. We have the opportunity with new housing to have a generation of kids that doesn't have lead poisoning for once. That would help our economy. That would help our city. And having residents, you know, permanent residents on the waterfront in these buildings means that those people will provide surveillance for the businesses in this area. If I'm across the street from the Jansen Building in my second-story apartment and I hear noise outside, I'm going to yell out my window or I'm going to call 911, you know, so that somebody's not vandalizing a building. So, you know, people need to open their minds. They need to realize that this is how plenty of other cities live, how plenty of other cities were designed. Even Eureka, historically, was designed with mixed-use buildings, retail or services on the ground floor, apartments above. We still have them standing and occupied. Thank you.
Thanks, Althea. Colin Fisk.
Good evening, Council. My name is Colin Fisk. I'm the Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I'll try to keep it brief. First, I just want to clarify that the item that you're currently discussing is really a procedural item. Declaring these lands surplus is a required step before issuance of the RFP, which is later on your agenda. And that RFP is not only legally required under the adopted housing element, but is really a hugely positive step forward for the city in providing affordable, walkable, bikeable, transit-accessible, climate-friendly housing that is so desperately needed. And a big part of what makes the housing so beneficial is the location that allows it to be walkable, bikeable, transit-accessible, and so forth. So I encourage you to move forward with this without any further delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Jennifer Bissett.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I am a small-business owner in Old Town. And I am very concerned with already, again, the lack of parking that we have for our businesses. Many reasons that people don't come and shop with us on a more regular basis is because they say there's nowhere to park their vehicle. Many people that come to my store are handicapped and need to have close parking. They can't come in. Where are these ninety-five people going to park that you guys are putting in housing down there? You can't tell me that every low-income or what-have-you person doesn't have a car. Most of them still do have cars. We're very concerned, all of us in Old Town, as merchants, are very concerned on the impact it's going to have on tourists. The waterfront should be somewhere that is beautiful and no buildings in the way. And I understand that we do need housing, and I'm very passionate about the fact that we do. There's got to be somewhere else. The City of Eureka is large. There has to be somewhere else for you guys to look for this type of thing to be built for low-income housing. I see housing being built all over town already. I have housing going in across the street from my shop. So I'm very concerned and I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Caroline Griffith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Caroline Griffith. I'm the Executive Director of the North Coast Environmental Center and also a Eureka resident. The NEC is very supportive of building housing in areas like this that are walkable, bikeable, transit-oriented, and also just really can contribute to a fabulous quality of life for those who live there. We are very supportive of declaring this land surplus so you can move forward with the process of putting out the RFP to have housing built there. As a former resident of, as a resident of Eureka and a former resident of Old Town, I see huge benefit to having more people living in the area. When I lived down there, oftentimes in the evening, I would go for walks and it would just be empty, which really feels kind of sketchy and dangerous. So having more folks actually living in the area does a lot to help make the community feel more vibrant, more safe, and more livable. And it's, you know, right in the staff report says that for this area with the way that it's zoned, coastal-dependent, coastal-related, and visitor-serving uses are allowed, along with upper-floor residential areas. So it sounds like what would be allowed in this area would already be what a lot of folks are concerned about or would like to see happen. Residents up above, coffee shops, tourist-serving businesses, whether that's kayak rentals or bike rentals, all those things that can really make the community vibrant. And also, lead to a really good quality of life for people who are able to live in and to live in. be to a really good quality of life for people who are able to live in areas and be those customers of all the Old Town businesses, to be able to walk to Old Town Coffee, to be able to walk to the co-op. So please move forward with declaring these surplus and then on to the next part of the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline. I can't see anybody else. Shannon, can you?
I don't see anybody else.
Okay. So seeing no one else, does anybody else want to say anything? Okay. With that, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council. But before we do that, I would just like, if we could just take a moment to clarify what really low-income and very low-income housing is. Could we have just a quick clarification of that, please? It's not necessarily the people that are living at the mission, is what I'm trying to say, so.
No, so for low-income housing, for low-income, it can be between eighty and sixty percent below median income, and that's the city, I mean, the county of Humboldt's median income level. And then for very low income, it's anywhere between fifty percent and thirty percent. Whether it's fifty, forty, or thirty for very low, or eighty, seventy, or sixty is depending upon the type of fundings that's used for the development. But I could, do you want to know what those levels are?
Yeah, we do. Please.
Hold on one second.
Did you say it's the counties?
Yes, it's Humboldt County. It's done by HUD, Housing and Urban Development. I think it's a federal, yeah. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this. There we go. There it is. So for a single person living on those, it varies depending on how many people are in your household. For a single person, eighty percent of the median income is forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Sixty percent of the median income level is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty. Fifty percent for a single person is twenty-seven thousand, three hundred. And thirty percent is sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty. Now, if you had, let's say, a family of four, the eighty percent limit is sixty-two thousand dollars a year. The sixty percent limit is forty-six thousand dollars a year. The fifty percent limit is thirty-nine thousand dollars per year. And the thirty percent limit is twenty-three and a half thousand dollars a year. And that's for calendar year twenty-twenty-two. Every year that gets updated and there's usually a slight increase in that number. So depending on when these are built and when they're ready for tenants, it'll be based on the current median income.
Great. So what I'm hearing is the the money, the income that these people are receiving, this is people that work in restaurants, this is people that work in motels, hotels, teachers. These are people. So I just wanted to clarify that before we move on, because I heard a lot of talk, of negative talk about what this might look like. So we just wanted to make sure that we were clear. Thank you. Comments from council? Anyone? Councilmember Bauer?
I've got a lot of questions, actually, but the first one, someone alluded to the fact that these properties are polluted. That's the first I've heard. Just like to get a answer on that.
So as part of the process for the RFP, we receive Phase One environmental studies for all of the parcels. And this particular parcel, the one on the west end, has a listing on GeoTracker. And according to the ESA, there may be some issue with a diesel spill that happened a number of years ago. But the ESA didn't find any significant issues regarding that, so I think we can deal with that.
Another quick question. I get what people are saying, right? I mean, that wanting to see mixed use, wanting to see, you know, some sort of commercial activity beyond housing. I just, in the past five years, have we had any strong you know, interest in developing these parcels?
I get calls all the time from hoteliers, not only local, but also from out of the area when this came up. I brought this to the attention of many of those previous proposers on this property, have spoken to the adjacent property owners about this property and about creative ways where you could meet this goal as well as meet the idea of a hotel. It's totally feasible, totally can happen. Does the finance pencil out? Typically, no. But there is that ability to do that. I get calls all the time about any waterfront property to put a hotel on. And it comes from both locals and from people out of the area. So as council knows, this has been through two previous processes. Both of them ended up in lawsuits and didn't go anywhere. So yes, there has been interest in waterfront development. England Marine, obviously, just did some waterfront development. And I've had a lot of requests for that. Now, there's a local nonprofit that's looking for a new location as well that wants to be on the waterfront, so yes, we do get inquiries about it, for sure.
So by surpleasing the property, we're not precluding that, that activity, those other activities?
No, not at all. As a matter of fact, private monies being used for affordable housing can raise those limits that I just spoke to and in staff's opinion, that's almost market rate, if you're in that level of eighty percent. Obviously, some of them have to be very low income, but it is very difficult to do a project like this, as we learned with the Earth Center, to have different levels of income and have the financing in order to cover that. They, the consultant that we were working with at the time had a very creative way of using bonds for that, which is something that could happen here. Your typical financing for something like this would be very difficult to do something like that, though.
Okay. And then I know there were some questions about SEQA. And just to kind of clarify to people, surpleasing is not really a SEQA event. It is exempt from SEQA to surplus, and that's just simply a part of the process, but future activities like development will have to go through SEQA, correct?
That's absolutely correct. There is a specific exemption when you're going through the Surplus Land Act process, and that's the exemption that we're using today for this particular action. But future development on that property, we will certainly revisit SEQA at that time. I also want to just mention, if I may, and I think it's related to your previous question. These are public properties and the Surplus Land Act requires us to go through a process where we then offer it for affordable housing or for other purposes related to, you know, schools or open space. We can't just sell it to whoever we want for whatever we think is appropriate. So you know, this is part of the process and we are required to do it under the Surplus Land Act. So I think it's important that people understand that as well.
And I'd just like to add to the SEQA part of it, you know, yes, the surplus is a part of it, it's an exemption that's allowable. Until we have a project to define, we can't really go through that other portion of SEQA.
That's what I was getting to. I mean, we're not doing a project, we're just taking an action to get us to a project. And then the last question, maybe the last question, but what happens as far as regional housing needs assessment if if we were to change, if, you know, we don't come in with these numbers that are proposed, the forty-five units on one, the forty-five on another, how does that affect us in the long run with the state?
So there's a few things that could happen. I don't know if your question is if there is a denial of this surplus, we would not be in good standing with our housing element. We could be, you know, faced with potential action by the state, which they've done most recently with a bunch of cities that have passed legislation that is against housing in their opinion. The other issue would be our pro-housing designation that we just applied for, not being in good standing with our housing element would definitely affect that application. And it would definitely affect the thirty-five million dollar grant that Link is going for right now for the other projects.
All right. That's all for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Slattery, could you please describe the the nature of ownership when we do this sort of thing? We surplus the land, we put out an RFP. Who owns the property in the long run? How does that work?
There's different options when people propose for that. For some of the developers, it may be best that they purchase it. And for others, it may be best if they did a ground lease. I believe with Link, we're doing a ground lease, correct? So there's different ways of getting there and that would be a part of the RFP process and reviewing proposals. The question that was asked previously about paying property taxes, that's solely dependent on which way they choose. If they did buy it from the city and owned it. If it was a private company and not a government agency, they would be paying property tax if they owned it. The ground lease, they would not.
Thank you. And what about those shirets that folks are concerned about? What happened to those?
So the design shirets are a part of the RFP, and we're getting into the next, are you okay with that?
Does that spill over into the next stage?
Yeah, but I think the city attorney is okay with it. So it, in the RFP, those are listed in the RFP. There's a link to all A, B, C, D, E. So is that five? The five different options that came up are a part of that and they're listed in there as a high priority. All of the issues concerning about having the buildings be close to the road, almost all of the design shirets have that in it. They also have a lot of open space between the buildings and the boardwalk to avoid shading. So those things are a high priority listed in the RFP for people to consider.
Okay. So they're not gone, it's part of the next step of the process?
Yeah, I mean, I want to be clear, we can't guarantee
Of course.
that these developers are all going to come in, but if a developer does come in and resembles those type of things, they'll get higher ratings in the proposal process.
And one more question. In some of the projects, we see a mixture of different income levels. I understand, once again, we're not at that step in the process, but is it true that this property or the development on these parcels could end up with some mix of income, of low income and very low income?
They're required to. So as a part of this, I believe it's forty-five very low and what?
All three of these parcels are very low-income units that are required there. The RFP encourages additional units at other income levels be included in their proposals. So it has to have very low income to what proportion, you said? What percentage?
Just the number of units, and I think it's ninety.
Forty-five on each of the larger lots and five on the smaller lot.
Ninety-five.
Okay.
And so like, somebody discussed previously, if they're looking at, I'll tell you, and we've talked to developers who are interested in this property, doing studios, doing senior studios, like, for example, we did the Link project for that RFP. We had one of the respondents respond to doing a single building of sixty-five studios for senior housing. So there could be something like that that's responded here and leave plenty of space for other uses.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions for now.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. In terms of where we're at in the process tonight, I'm curious, several public speakers have brought up, you know, prior lawsuits and, you know, and things related to this property. Could you speak a little bit as to why it's still vacant? There's been you know, many rounds of public process around this and so I think, I'm just kind of curious to understand that better.
I think I just know enough to be dangerous and I wouldn't want to misspeak. I do know that the original one had something to do with a conflict of interest of some sort with the way that the property was awarded. And the second one just ended up in a lawsuit and I don't know enough to speak to that. But why it hasn't been done, I mean, the two thousand fifteen process happened. A lot of the previous staff member that did that process looked at this to other developers and those design shirets, from their perspective, were not financeable because they didn't pencil out. We didn't pursue anything after that and this was the next step in the process. And actually, the next step in the process was adding these to our housing element, which was approved back in October.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we ready for comments? Councilmember Fernandez?
So I know what we're talking about, at least on this particular hearing, is the procedure. So can you walk me through the process of what happens when we go to the RFP? What occurs next?
Is your mic on? Because people can't hear you.
Sorry, I was asking if, if you could walk us through the process, if this is approved, what is the next steps? What happens with the RFP and then what goes from there?
So if the surplus is approved, if the next item on your agenda is approved and the RFP is authorized for release, then the plan is to release that on Friday of this week. There will be, there's a timeline actually in the RFP that's proposed for respondents to attend informational meeting via Zoom for asking questions. We will release an addendum to the RFP that answers any questions that come up during that time period. And then there is a total of sixty days from this Friday to the date when we request that people respond to the RFP. Once they do respond, then there's a ninety-day period where we can negotiate with respondents. And normally what we would do is the city manager would appoint a review panel to review all of the responses to the RFP. They would make a recommendation to council and then council would go from there.
Who would be on that panel?
That would be up to the city manager.
Who would be on that panel typically?
That would be up to the city manager.
We typically would be people from the development community, municipal community and likely something in the housing arena. Likely, I think, is what we did last time, is we had a Humboldt Association, a realtor person on there, a private developer and you know, some staff.
And I understand that you had stated the shirets, that was what came out of that, those are the priority for this particular RFP, correct?
So it's one of them. It's definitely, there's five different proposals. Some of them are definitely not ever going to get permitted. I think number A, where we have a lake and a launch and stuff like that is not likely to get permitted, but the concepts of open, open space, the concept of having buildings up and fronting the road and having space in the back is definitely the theme of all of those different options that came from those conceptual designs. And they're definitely a priority for people that are responding.
And so with these being the priority, is it that they could disregard it? And I understand you said that they would get points if they maintained that, so could they potentially disregard it? And say, we have an independent design that we would like to present instead?
Yeah, they can. I would think that trying to be competitive, and if they're really interested in this, I don't, I would hope that they wouldn't go that direction, but they definitely can. And if somebody came and they decided to put, you know, every single building right up against the boardwalk, I don't think that the people reviewing this would rate them very highly.
Right. And that's what I'm getting at, is that a large portion of the input I've received over the last few days has been about that shiret. And so I just want to maintain that that public input is still being provided as guidance in this process.
Yeah, and what we do as a part of the panel is we list those things in the RFP and we put together a scoring matrix. We say what what is valued and what has certain points associated with it. And we would put that into a scoring matrix and that's what each proposal would be scored on.
And then I don't know if this gets into the other item, but you know, when we're looking at that shiret and we're looking at those priorities, are there any architectural limitations, you know, when we're talking about height, where I think people have been worried about the shading? And I think as it was brought up.
So there's two things that would affect height. I mean, obviously, the the cost could be cost prohibitive, depending on how high you go and what type of, you know, groundwater's close there. I know that the foundation for England Marine was extremely expensive and that's a single-story building. So I'm sure that's going to be taken into account, the costs associated with it. And then, of course, the zoning in that area and what height you're allowed to go on the zoning in that area. The other thing that needs to be considered, people are concerned about, view sheds are are code, and I feel like I shouldn't be talking like a planner right now because I don't feel like one. But basically, there's view shed corridors at C and D Street that need to be maintained. So the first story of that basic easement between C and D Street needs to be maintained so that the visibility of the bay is still maintained.
And then, lastly, uh, I, I know a couple of the businesses, uh, I think particularly Dick Taylor's had brought up the issue of the right-of-way for them to receive their freight loading. How's that going to work?
So is it, it's existing?
It was in an email that they sent to all of us earlier.
Yeah, if it's existing, we'll definitely work with them. Um, if it's, they're talking about East Street, I assume. But yeah, that would be maintained.
Sorry, I saw a hand go up in the back, and I know we can't take questions. I apologize. You can talk with Miles during the break.
Yeah. Okay, so we've had some questions, and now we're ready for comments? If we're finished with questions? And a motion or a non-motion? Councilmember Castellano?
I, I just have one more question. I mean, it, it's a little confusing to me because we're kind of talking about, really, we're speaking to a later agenda item instead of this item. So my rule-oriented mind is uh, struggling, but I'm okay. Um, you know, I think the question I have is, you know, shall we move forward at this point? And, you know, we get to the RFP point, um, you know, and we put certain parameters that we want in, you know, to see in the RFPs. Um, and let's say no one meets them, or, you know, like, kind of, what's, what's our obligation in terms of, um, you know? Or, or let's say someone does meet them, but we don't think it fits for the city of Eureka, or, or those kinds of things? What's our obligation at that point?
So that's part of the ninety-day negotiating period that Principal Planner Kenyon, I mean, Getz was speaking to. Um, we could go through that, and there could be a decision that we're just not happy. Um, and then we would still own the property. The pro- the property would still be a part of our housing element, and we'd still have a requirement to fulfill that part of our arena from there, and that ninety-five units that we did. But if it came to that point, we can say negotiations fell out, and we're, we're not proceeding with anybody.
Councilmember Bauer?
I, I think what we're hearing from the public too is, you know, as this process unfolds, I know, I'm not, feel like Councilmember Castellano, like, out of order a little bit. But, you know, there's points through this couple of years, however long this takes, where the public has the ability to provide input. I know one is the SEQA process, right? Everybody can comment on that. Are there additional opportunities for the public to get involved?
And I believe we included in the RFP requirement, so similar to what Link had done after they were done. It wasn't just the design review process that was a public process, but they actually held other public meetings to hear from the community, and that's a requirement of this, is once a, a, a proposal was chosen, then there has to be, is it three? We have the design review. Kristen can answer this better than I can. Excuse me, Principal Planner Getz.
Off the top of my head, yes. Um, design review process would provide opportunities for the public to make comments, and um, there is a requirement that they, uh, responded to community outreach, and I think it's two, at least two meetings. But I can double-check on that before we get to the RFP part.
And then on top of that, and typically for these type of developments, just like with Link, they had the ASICS grant, the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant. You know, a part of that requires a lot of public outreach. So we did the first round of ASICS grant. They held three meetings, had discussions for each of the properties, and tried to mitigate transportation concerns, aesthetics, other things like that. Um, and then they're doing a second round now. We had two very well-attended um, meetings at Jefferson School for that grant um, proposal as well. And so I would assume that if this is your typical developer of affordable housing, that that would be a way that they would fund this, and that there would be even more than those public co- uh, chances for the public to, to comment on it.
And the public will certainly get a chance to comment when the panel makes a recommendation to the city council, too.
Great. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I noticed uh, when I was looking at the sherretts that um, a couple of them, you know, had kind of the mixed use, sort of like, you know, a, a housing component, but not at this uh, level of density. And I guess I'm wondering um, a couple of things. One is why this level of density? Like, why are, why were those still not a possibility? Why do we need ninety-five units?
So a couple of things, many things happened. When we first did our housing element, um, we had uh, a property, the Senior Woodlot, that was listed in there, and I don't know the number of units. But um, after the fact, we found out that that Senior Woodlot was not viable. We got a grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. It had a deed restriction on it, we couldn't use it. So that put us at a deficit. Um, we were happy when Link proposed, and Link proposed to do a certain number of units. And at, during that first ASICS grant application, was having a certain number of units. After that, construction costs went up, other things went up. They had to downsize, and they, we lost some units there. Then when we did the property swap, when we heard from the community and changed some of the properties in Old Town and, and swapped those properties, we had to do an update to our housing element. And we did that update to our housing element. Oh, we also lost Third and E as a property, too, because it was too small. And so that lost some units. And then um, when we did the housing element update, for some reason, and this is the state, not us, to some reason, they approved a property that was owned by Caltrans that was, they were going to surplus to us. And then in the second round of the update, said, no, you can't do that because you don't own it. So we lost some property there. So we looked at everything, and we also lost some units on the Sunset Properties because the state wouldn't allow us to do certain density bonuses. So because of all of that, that's what led us with this deficit.
So this property is to try to fill that deficit made by multiple other properties, not coming together the way that the city was hoping?
Yes.
And it was both Cooper Gulch and the Sheriff's Woodlot properties that we lost.
Oh, that's right, there was two.
And there was um, a hundred units between the two of those.
One follow-up, yeah.
I, uh, one more follow-up. I guess I'm wondering, um, so it seems like, you know, people, uh, again, it's not seem, doesn't seem to be super an objection to necessarily like a mixed use and there being some housing. I, I don't know if I'm, in some of the people I've talked to, it seems like it's just that it's such a, that it's so uh, high-density. And I s- I am wondering, you know, uh, ninety-five units is quite a lot. Um, and I'm just, I, that's either going to have to sprawl to the entire lot, be incredibly small, or it has to go up into four stories or three stories at least. That's going to be, these are going to be very big.
I would say with three acres, and if you were to do studios, I think there's more than ample room, and doing it in two stories would be available if you used all of that space. If you look at Seventh and Myrtle, there's thirty-seven units there, and they're two-bedroom.
They have a mix of uh, one, uh, studios, ones, twos, and threes.
Yeah, so they have a whole mix, and that's maybe a third of an acre, and there's thirty-seven units there, so um...
And that includes, that, and that includes commercial on the lower level as well as parking?
No, no, not just the first floor.
Because we're required to have some parking, right? For accessibility because of this being public?
There will be parking requirements, um, definitely because it's in the coastal zone, and also because of the visitor-serving use. There's requirements for, depending on the visitor-serving use, how many parking places you have to have. So there'll definitely be parking as a component of this.
Okay. So we've asked questions, and now the time has come to comment and make a motion or not. Councilmember Moulton?
Uh, I just have a few comments. I also run a business in Old Town. Um, the clarification on the income levels and what that actually plays out to be, I think is a big, um, is very important. There's this, this idea that we're talking about homeless shelters, and we're really just talking about families and seniors, and um, I myself would qualify for this housing. Uh, I'm eager to get more people into Old Town. Um, and people who live there are going to shop there. I'm eager, eager to get residents on the, um, to increase public safety. I'm eager to get people walking around, attending festivals, shopping at the shops, and um, you know, generally being customers at the business. And it's in Old Town. I would support this, and I would make a motion if it was in front of me. Can I move staff recommendation? Shall I read this? Oh, it's on the board, thank you. Uh, I move the city council adopt a resolution finding the surplus of this, by the city of Eureka, of the C to F parcels is exempt from SEQA, and declaring the C to F parcels surplus land.
Oh, second.
Great, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Four yes votes, Contreras Deloche, dissented. Motion carries.
Thank you. And thanks, everybody, for being here. Um, usually, we take a ten-minute bio-break right now, so I think we're going to do that, and we'll come back for our other um, public hearing, so. This is a call-out to council. We're starting the meeting in thirty seconds. We're counting them down. All right, we're going to bring this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for sitting down. We have a lot more to cover. We're going to be discussing the parking assessment, district parking reduction or removal. Uh, Kristen Getz, could you give us a report, please?
Thank you, madam.
One moment, one moment. Katie Moulton, are you in the house? Renee Deloche? Renee Contreras Deloche?
Thank you, ladies. Yeah, so we're going to restart this meeting again. Uh, parking assessment, district parking reduction or removal, with the report by Principal Planner Getz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the Parking Assessment District was created in nineteen fifty-four, and it encompassed most of the city's central business district.
Excuse me, one moment, I'm sorry. So we're starting the meeting again. If there are any conversations, would you be willing to take them in the hall? Thank you, appreciate that so much.
The city council approved issuance of bonds for the acquisition and construction of off-street parking facilities. And between nineteen fifty-five and nineteen sixty-four, a total of eight parking lots were developed before the bonds were retired. Although the Parking Assessment District is no longer collecting assessments, any public parking purchased with funds from the Parking Assessment District must go through a public hearing process prior to allowing a reduction or removal of the public parking. The Fifth and D Street parking lot was one of the lots purchased with Parking Assessment District funds, and it is included in both the original and the amended housing element in Implementation Program H thirty-four as one of the sites for development of housing on city-owned parcels. It's also included in the Request for Proposal, which is also on tonight's agenda. Although the utilization rate is high for the lot, it's not the highest among the parking lots which were included in the June twenty-twenty-two Old Town and Downtown parking study. And while reduction or removal of off-street parking will impact uh, on-street parking, the parking study shows there's ample on-street parking in the vicinity of the lot to accommodate the reduction or the removal of the parking spaces. The site is very well-served by alternative transportation options with easy access to bus stops and bike lanes. And any new residential units which are deed-restricted to households earning eighty percent or less of Humboldt County area median income are actually not required to provide any off-street parking spaces. But they also can, uh, developers can also provide bus passes to tenants and encourage utilization of the city's bicycle facilities and other transportation options. Although up to thirty-four parking spaces may be eliminated with this option, if the RFP process is successful, a minimum of twenty affordable units will be constructed on the site. Staff is recommending that council hold a public hearing and allow parking to be reduced or removed at the Fifth and D Street site in order to ensure development of affordable housing. And I have a motion when you're ready.
Okay, do we have any questions? Seeing none, we'll open this site, or we'll open up this public hearing? No? For public comment, come on up, Mr. Callison.
Mayor, council?
There it goes.
A letter has been submitted on behalf of Security National, uh, by Security National's attorney. The letter spells out how the decision being considered tonight regarding the Fifth and D parking lot is not exempt from SEQA, as in fact, an act of piecemealing SEQA. It is the city's responsibility to comply with SEQA and consider the project as a whole. This includes adequate elevation, evaluation of the impacts of the proposed housing developments, conducting appropriate studies on the pedestrian, on pedestrian and public safety, air quality, neighborhood compatibility, and traffic, not just parking. You mu- you must table this decision until you have adequate, adequately studied the impact associated with these projects and have addressed SEQA appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as you know, I, I do think parking lots are important um, in this city, and I think the business owners downtown um, would agree with that. Um, I, I do think it's kind of um, inappropriate to use the two thousand twenty-two period because with COVID and everything, things, a lot of things weren't open. So I don't think you're really getting a true um, you know, study. It might, might help you get what you need to do or want to do, but I don't think it's going to be accurate for, for what's really needed in the community. So I, I would suggest you go back and use prior dates, and eighty-four percent is pretty uh, pretty high occupancy or use of a parking lot. Um, and you think about the, the older lady here who um, couldn't get around? There's a lot of people like that. My mom, there's, there's not a place to park, you know? I can't take her somewhere, you know? So we need these parking lots, not, not, we're not always going to be able to ride our bikes. Um, sometimes we're going to break a leg, sometimes we're going to get old. Sometimes things will happen physically that won't allow us to do that. So if you can, guys, continue to get rid of all these parking lots, I hope you're still here when you can't find a place to park when you're, you know, eighty-five, and then you're going to think, gee, what did we do? Anyway, keep it in mind, you know? Right now, we're all able to walk a couple blocks, it's no big deal. But a lot of people can't, and you know, ADA is out there for a reason, and we need to take care of those folks as well. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Good evening again.
Hello.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this agenda item. My name is Kenny Carzal. I'm here today representing Security National Properties. Um, SNP understands the city is under significant pressure to comply with the state regional housing allocation requirements. To be clear, SNP supports the development of housing that is accessible to city residents at all income levels. As I've commented before, the Fifth and D lot is next to SNP's headquarters, where more than two hundred people come to work daily. Uh, the Fifth and D lot is the main parking lot for many of our employees, and there is no nearby alternative. The city staff is relying on an outdated study to make their recommendation. The parking study being used relies on data collected during the COVID-19 pandemic and therefore does not reflect true parking conditions. This fact is recognized in the parking study, which states, and I quote, "Parking occupancy rose from 2016 to 2019, then decreased in 2021." This decrease is likely related to the COVID-19 pandemic and accompanying econ- economic impacts as well as associated increase in office workers moving remotely. This statement can be found on pages 17 and 18 of the parking assessment. I have previously stated our concern for our employees' safety as well as the safety of all downtown visitors and workers in the elimination of this lot, as well as other parking lots in the city is planning to develop. Until a thorough due diligence with an updated parking study is conducted, we ask the city to vote no on this agenda item and begin working with the business community to determine the best locations to meet the housing needs and provide a safe and inviting downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll bring it to Zoom where I see Colin Fisk.
Good evening again, council members. Colin Fisk with CRTP. I did a little math here, which I think is enlightening. If you use, you know, the maximum recorded occupancy rate for this parking lot, uh, at the busiest time, it was storing no more than 29 cars for short-term car storage. If you apply the densities that have been proposed by Link in the very similar Eighth and G lot to this, um, you could easily house 90 people or more in that same space. And so I think it really does come down to a decision that simple. Are we prioritizing fewer than 30 cars to be parked there temporarily? Or are we, uh, prioritizing permanent housing for 90 or more people? Not only that, but housing that is, uh, as with the previous site, walkable, bikeable, and transit accessible. I think the claim that you heard that this somehow violates SEQA is egregious in the extreme and I encourage you to prioritize, uh, what this community really values and hopefully that is housing over temporary car storage in this prime location. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. And Philip Bowdre?
Yes, thank you. As our cities continue to grow, we must carefully consider how we can create more sustainable and livable environments. One of the key benefits of removing parking lots is increased walkability and livability. By creating more space for pedestrians, cyclists, and other non-motorized transportation, we can make our downtown areas more accessible, pleasant, and convenient for everyone. Removing parking lots promotes sustainable transportation, encourages walking, biking, and public transit use, which can reduce greenhouse gas emissions, air pollution, and dependence on fossil fuels, contributing to a more sustainable environment and addressing climate, climate change challenges. In addition, removing parking lots supports economic development. Replacing parking lots with mixed-use buildings, parks, or public spaces can attract businesses, residents, tourists, and boost local economic activity, creates jobs, and increases property values. It also enhances design aesthetics. Parking lots are unattractive and create gaps in the city fabric. Removing them provides opportunities for improved design, creating more aesthetically pleasing streetscapes with better integration of buildings, sidewalks, and public spaces. Removing parking lots also promotes health and well-being. Encouraging active transportation like walking and cycling can promote physical activity, reducing the risk of chronic diseases and improving overall well-being. Removing parking lots also enhances safety and security. Parking lots can be associated with safety concerns such as car accidents, theft, and vandalism. By removing parking lots, we can create a safer and more secure environment for pedestrians, cyclists, and all denizens of the city. In conclusion, removing parking lots from areas of dense development, such as downtown districts, has numerous benefits, including increased walkability, reduced congestion, promotion of sustainable transportation, support for economic development, enhanced design aesthetics, promotion of health and well-being, and improve safety and security. I appreciate city staff's efforts in this area and look forward to council's deliberation.
Thank you. And Althea Christensen?
Yep, um. So, you know, it made sense to have that parking lot there when the building kitty-corner from it was the J.C. Penney store, um, back before the mall was built. There is now no need for that parking. There's not any big draw like that, um, in that area. You know, uh, Security National is not open to the public. They're not a service provider. They're not a museum. Um, you know, nobody is, is going down there to visit them. Um, as a taxpayer, it is not my responsibility to provide parking for a private business's employees. Uh, all the other businesses surrounding that block, um, provide their own parking. You know, the insurance agency, Denny's, the dispensary, um, they all have their own private parking that they pay for. It should not be my obligation, um, to subsidize Security National's parking, um, when they absolutely have the money to do it themselves. You know, if they're that concerned about it, that vacant J.C. Penney building could be knocked down and changed into a parking garage, you know, at any moment. It's been vacant for sale for years. Um, as far as safety, as a small woman walking around Old Town and Downtown, the biggest risk to me is from cars. I have to cross Fourth and Fifth Street at an uncontrolled intersection every morning to get to work. Um, you know, reducing the number of cars is, is going to make everyone safer. And I do want to point out that in the 100 and something days that the, um, left lane of Fifth Street has been closed because of the Lloyd Building, there has not been a significant impact to traffic in that area. Um, and I really think we should reduce the number of traffic lanes, um, on Fifth Street there because, uh, it makes it much easier for everyone to cross the street when you're only trying to deal with two lanes of traffic instead of three. Um, and it would make it easier for people to get parking on the street when there's not, you know, three lanes of traffic speeding by because they think it's a freeway. So absolutely, I think the parking lot should be removed. I think it should be developed as housing. Again, that will place eyes on the street, you know, providing natural surveillance to the businesses in the area, you know, to the tourists that are walking around that people are so concerned about, you know? Having residents who are looking out their windows makes for a safer city. More cars do not make for a safer city. Thank you.
Thanks, Althea. Do you see anyone else?
I do not see anybody else on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll see if anybody else out in the audience has changed their mind? No? If you do, you can come on up.
Off the cuff, can I? Um. If in fact these studies that you're looking at have been, were done over COVID period, I think part of your job is to really revisit that again. I learned that during the one-way, um, issue when we actually finally got ahold of the study, which was a nightmare in itself, but, um, in reading it, there were so many contradictory things that were coming from staff to you and then we had this piece of paper. As a matter of fact, when it got to the point, um, the city council, and I believe you were there, Mario, um, other board members were like, "Did you not read this?" So do your homework again. Do your job. Read these studies yourself. Don't always count on your staff. They're great people. They're working their butts off. But if I'm taking the time to read these studies and I have a full-time job and then some, I think you guys do too. So do us all a favor, read those studies. And by the way, the caller that just called is incorrect with her J.C. Penney's parking lot information. Clearly not from here. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So with that final comment, we'll bring it back to council for comments and/or a motion. Anyone? So generally, the process is to do questions? Public comment? Comments? We did. So in this particular public hearing, I will go ahead and allow it, but generally, because I allowed it before, but generally, we should keep it to the, uh, process. So.
I appreciate that.
Go ahead and ask your question and then you can.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you very much. I just, uh, a question came up for me during, um, during the discussion or during the public comment. Um, just thinking, well, first, um, City Manager Slattery, when were the parking assessments done that we are talking about?
So the actual study was done in 2021. Um, they took into account, as was displayed on the presentation, traffic studies that were done in 2016, 2017, and 2019. All of those were taken into account. Um, it did increase in this lot, and I believe it was 2019 to 84%. Um, but part of that analysis is looking at the on-street parking and I believe there is, is it 3,000? 3,100 off-street, on-street parking in the area that was in the study? And they determined that there's plenty of space on-street to accommodate the loss of those 34 or if you go by the 84%, 20, whatever, spaces that were there. But no, they took into account many traffic studies over the same period of time to determine the recommendations for the parking study.
So it's just the analysis that is recent? The actual data collected is from, uh, pre-COVID?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hundred percent.
And, um, in the, just to clarify the timeline here and actually have a question about the, um, the parking district bonds. So 60 years ago, uh, the community decided that it was time to invest in accessibility, uh, in this, um, new-fangled thing called the car that all of a sudden everybody had and they were going to bring people into Old Town and the businesses paid to invest in these public parking lots. When did that process stop? When did businesses stop paying into that?
So it was in the presentation, I think it was 1964. So it was 1955 when it started and the reason why that was done, it's very similar to what we're doing now. There was an emphasis on bringing, um, businesses into Old Town and by requiring parking, it was kind of a deterrent for those businesses because there's a cost associated with that. So what they did is they got rid of that requirement, started the parking assessment district so that they could develop parking lots for them. Um, 1964, it stopped. Nobody's paid into it since then and that's where we're at now.
Are there any businesses around currently that paid into that in 1964?
I couldn't answer that, but, um, maybe.
Maybe.
It's not very likely, but there's maybe, um, ones that are there. And just so you know, if something was built after 1964 and they're in this district, which a lot of these businesses were and didn't pay anything into, they took advantage of that and didn't have to have any parking when they developed their property.
Oh, so they weren't required to have public parking because this was available and paid for by previous citizen?
Correct.
Um. And just if I could clarify, that's for the commercial uses. Residential uses did have to provide parking.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification. Um, would there be any obligation from the city to businesses that paid into this, um, uh, to have access to parking if they exist? City Attorney Luna?
The answer is no, at this stage. And we've looked at this before when we did the housing element, whether or not we had a legal obligation to keep these parking lots around and the answer is resounding no.
Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing that.
Uh, Councilmember?
Councilmember Molton asked the same question I was going to ask.
Great, okay. So with that, comments and a motion? Uh, Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I, my comment, just, you know, going over kind of just some of the numbers of it. Um, you know, how many available street parking, um, versus, you know, how many? It, apparently it's about 34 parking spaces. 84% utilization though puts that, uh, in the twenties. Um, versus potentially housing 90 residents. Um, my comment is I just, uh, I think that that serves a significantly, um, better good to have housing.
Thank you. So does someone want to make a motion?
Would you like me to make the motion?
That's up to you.
I can't read my screen and I haven't made a motion before. I'll make a motion.
It's right there?
Okay, I am going to make a motion that, uh, what do we, what do I do? Start at the paragraph? I move that the city council, uh, of the city of Eureka adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka finding the project qualifies for a Class 12 surplus government property exemption from SEQA and authorizing the reduction or removal of public parking from the parking lot at Fifth and D Streets to facilitate development of affordable housing projects.
I'll second.
Great, so we have a motion, a second. Let's vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, bye. I'll be back.
So we'll now move on to the consent calendar. Um, all matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar polled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I have not been asked to pull anything. So, Councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second. Great, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Legislative Action Correspondence? Nothing tonight? Okay. Ordinances and Resolutions, Bill Number 1026-CS, Chapter 150 for Efficiency Dwelling Units, Principal Planner Kenyon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, really quick, the council voted on, to introduce this bill at its last meeting on March 21st, which if approved, will amend, uh, Municipal Code, Chapter 150 to decrease the minimum size of efficiency dwelling units from 190 square feet to 150 and to allow partial kitchen and bathroom facilities as allowed by the California Health and Safety Code. This ordinance supports housing creation such as through the conversion of small motel rooms. And I can pull up the recommended motion.
So this is the second reading. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so we'll open it up to public comment. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing no one in the audience, nobody on Zoom?
One on Zoom. Althea?
Uh, fully in favor of this. Uh, as you guys know, I suggested a building I thought could be converted, but looks like it's now been sold. But I have some other ones in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Althea. Oh, and Philip?
Philip?
Oh, he put a thumbs up.
Just a thumbs up. Got it.
I didn't have my glasses on. Thank you. Yeah. All right. So with that, we'll bring it back to council. We'll close public comment. Come back to council for a motion or comments. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make the motion to waive full reading, read by title only and adopt Bill Number 1026-CS in ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 150, Section 150.016 pertaining to efficiency dwelling units.
I'll second. Great. So it's been motion and second. Can we please vote?
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Great, thanks. Reports and action items. Housing Element RFP Affordable Housing Projects on City-Owned Properties. Principal Planner Getz?
So good evening again. As you mentioned, next we're gonna discuss the release of the Housing Element Request for Proposals, or RFP. The city's twenty nineteen twenty-seven Housing Element was originally adopted by the Eureka City Council on December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, and it was certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. The Housing Element was subsequently amended on October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and certified by HCD on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The current version of the twenty nineteen twenty-seven Housing Element contains seven goals, seventy-seven policies, and thirty-five implementation programs. And they were all developed based on five strategies to stimulate the creation of housing within the city limits. The city originally identified nine city-owned parking lots for potential housing, as well as three other publicly-owned sites. The ultimate goal was to develop at least three hundred and fifteen deed-restricted affordable units by two thousand and twenty-eight. And that was in order to meet the goals of the twenty nineteen twenty-seven Housing Element. An RFP for the first three sites was released in July of two thousand and twenty, and development of those sites was ultimately awarded to Link Housing. And with the amendment of the Housing Element, the list of city-owned sites was modified, and the city require, is required to release the Request for Proposal for Sites with the goal of now developing three hundred and thirty deed-restricted affordable units by two thousand and twenty-eight, unless the city has a contractual agreement with a developer to provide affordable housing on a listed site, or the city sells a parcel to a developer. Including the original Link Sites, a total of nine sites either already are, or are anticipated to soon be under contract. And the remaining five sites are included in this RFP. So the first site is City Site Four. It's a parking lot at Fifth and D Streets. City, or Site City Five is a parking lot at Sixth and L Streets. And Sites City Twelve through City Fourteen are the vacant parcels at C to F. For Site City Four at Fifth and D Street, a minimum of fifteen very low-income and five, excuse me, fifteen very low-income and five low-income dwelling units are required. The floor area ratio for development is three, and a minimum building size of thirty-nine thousand six hundred square feet is required. Site City Five is at Sixth and L Streets, and that's just east of City Hall here. And a minimum of fifteen very low-income and five low-income dwelling units are required. The floor area ratio for this site is also three, and a minimum building size of thirty-nine thousand six hundred square feet is required. Since parking city vehicles on the street increases the number of vehicle break-ins that we experience, staff has also included a requirement for the developer to retain at least twenty off-street parking spaces for residents, city vehicles, employees, and/or visitors, including the two ADA spaces and the EV charging station, or stations, char, sorry, charging station spaces that currently exist in the lot. Sites City Twelve through Fourteen are located between C and F Streets, just south of the boardwalk. And City Site Twelve is at the northeast corner of First and D Streets. And a developer could choose to utilize the D Street right-of-way for development in addition to the, the D Street parcel itself. A minimum of five very low-income dwelling units are required for this site, and the city has a maximum floor area ratio of two point five, and buildings are recommended to have a height of fifty feet or less, but they can be as tall as one hundred feet. Since the site is in the coastal zone, parking for development will be required. However, there are a number of different ways that developers could choose to reduce or remove the requirements to provide parking on the site. Those could include things such as paying in lieu parking fees for, per parking space, or they could potentially qualify for density bonuses and use concessions or incentives to reduce or waive the parking requirements on the site. Or they could choose to provide parking on the site. All of those would be available to them. City Site Thirteen is at Number One E Street, and a minimum of forty-five very low-income dwelling units are required for this site. And the site has a maximum floor area ratio of two point five, and buildings, again, are recommended to have a height of fifty feet or less, but can be as tall as one hundred feet. And again, since the site is in the coastal zone, parking for development will be required. Those same options that I just mentioned would apply to this site also. Site City Fourteen is at First and D Streets, and a minimum of forty-five very low-income dwelling units are required for this site. The site has a maximum floor area ratio of two point five, and buildings are recommended, again, to have a height of fifty, fifteen, excuse me, fifty feet or less, but can be as tall as one hundred feet, and parking for development will also be required on this lot. So staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution authorizing the release of the Housing Element RFP, and I do have a suggestion motion whenever you're ready.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Castellano?
Okay. I'll try to get all of my questions out before, but I'm not gonna promise that. So, I, starting off with the Fifth and D Building, the, the fifteen very low-income, five low-income of a thirty-nine thousand six hundred square foot building, could you remind me how high that building would be?
It would be at least, well, it would be at least three stories. Thirty, forty feet, depending on construction and requirements for height of the first floor and those kinds of things.
Great. And then, in terms of, you know, I, I know it's not on our agenda, but as we all know, right next door, there's a building that's coming down. If, you know, someone were to make a proposal for this building and included that other building as part of their proposal, or that other site, I should say, not the building, would that count towards the City of Eureka's arena numbers? How would that be factored, factored into our arena?
Yes, it would count towards the, the city's arena if they were developing residential uses on that site.
Great. And, you know, I'm sure everyone who might be interested in that would be aware that that site could potentially be available. Or at least that things have changed significantly on that site. And is it possible for council, you know, within this meeting, to say that we want more units on that site than the twenty that are proposed?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a minimum?
That is a minimum.
Yeah, I don't think we set a maximum.
We, we didn't.
I mean, obviously, there will be some maximums set by our existing codes, but that's a minimum, so I think there's an assumption that if they wanna go up from that, they, they certainly can.
Okay.
Yeah, the maximum number of units that they can have on the site is gonna be limited by floor area ratio, setback requirements, and parking if any, potentially landscaping also.
Great, okay. And then, there's so much in this RFP, it's hard, it's almost hard to talk about it all in one dose. Maybe I'll relinquish the floor and come back to my other questions, just so I can gather my thoughts.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I have a concern, I have a concern about the hundred-foot-tall possibility. I mean, even if they're setback from the waterfront, from the boardwalk, the shading potential is pretty significant.
I, I would definitely say that a hundred feet is very cost prohibitive with groundwater that close. You getting up to a hundred feet would take a significant investment in order to do that.
So why have it? Why don't, can we?
That's just zoning.
It's what's allowed by the zoning.
It's what's allowed, but can we say in this particular instance, no greater than fifty feet?
I think that we would be required to go back and, and modify our zoning code if we wanted to limit that.
Really?
Yeah, really. I would, which, which can, we can do, but, you know, that requirement was already looked at by the council and, and passed by the council, so obviously, we can modify it if that's the council's desire in the future.
And it would be a text amendment in the, to the coastal zoning code, so it would have to be certified by the Coastal Commission before it would become effective.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly do it, but.
Never mind.
So, in relation to the shading concern, in the links that are gonna be included in the RFP, the shading study that was done during the twenty fifteen charrette is also included in that information. So it's mentioned in the RFP that they should pay attention to that, and it is available to them.
Thank you. That's all for now, I guess.
How many stories is a ten, hundred feet?
A lot.
It would likely be nine, but.
Okay. Anyone else?
Nine point two.
Nine point two stories, thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Castellano?
So many questions. Okay, so, you know, this is, and I just wanna, before getting into more questions, when this originally came up, now it seems like a long time ago, I definitely talked about concerns around access for the public, public space, and did mention that I would be pushing heavily for that within the RFP. So I just wanna recollect that time, I don't know even how many months ago that was. And so, you know, council, we're in an interesting, and what, what in contemporary performance world is called like tight spaces, you know, where you're trying to articulate a community need, and there's a lot of disparate concerns that we have to weigh. And so, you know, I'm wondering, you know, as we create provisions within this RFP, what happens if we propose something that isn't, is difficult to actually enact?
We wouldn't wanna knowingly do something that can't happen. I think that if there's anything that's feasible, we can, we can consider that. I will say from a public space standpoint that the access to the boardwalk, the access to Matticat Plaza, the, the access to Coast Guard Plaza will always be there. We'll still have those. The F Street Dock will still be the city's, and that will still be accessible by the public. C Street Dock, Matticat Plaza, Matticat Dock, all of that will still be public space.
Thanks. And then, sorry, so in terms of the, the timeline, sixty days seems fast for, you know, a, a developer to, to make a sound proposal. Is there a reason for a sixty-day timeline?
It was the same timeline that we used in the last RFP. The notice of availability, which this RFP is also serving as a notice of availability for the Surplus Lands Act, requires that there be at least sixty days, so.
Okay. Okay. And then, the scoring system, or the selection criteria on pages, I don't know, forty-nine and fifty. You know, there's no points awarded for, you know, public access, or or kind of synchopatico, you know, with the rest of Old Town, or the kind of architectural styles of Old Town. Is it possible to, you know, the, the city decided this, this point system, I'm assuming, so it, it's possible for council to provide direction about the point system?
Certainly.
Correct.
Okay, great. That's, I think that's all my questions for right now.
And if I could just clarify, in the descriptions in the RFP for Sites Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen, there is language that says that the vision and required development for these sites includes a mix of visitor-serving use types such as those described above in the paragraph, and with residential uses above and pedestrian scale opening green space areas throughout the site. So that language is included in there.
Okay. Any further questions? So we'll open this up to public comment. Is anybody from the public here to comment on this item?
I just have a, a quick question. I think it was, it was kinda pointed out, I sent an email to everybody just with some of our concerns about the, the release of these parcels. Currently, the only dock-height loading facility that we have, as well as a roll-in facility are both on the north side of our building. And so I, I, it'd be my request that those would be maintained. I mean, they're absolutely critical to our usage and the, the function of the structure. We have, you know, we're unloading currently probably three to four tractor-trailers there a week, so we would really need that to stay open. And I think if you go out there and look at the tire tracks of the tractor-trailer, boy, it goes from the back of our building almost all the way out to the boardwalk for them to make the turn and everything. I know they can turn tighter, but that's, that's all my concern is, so. I didn't see anything on the RFP that was addressing access to current buildings. I just wanna make sure that was part of it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Greg Pearson, again. In the earlier portion where they were, you guys were surplusing the property, staff had made a comment that we could do all studios and then save a lot of space to have other amenities. But that's not what the RFP says. The RFP says that a, no more than seventy percent will be studio or one-bedroom, at least twenty-five percent will be two-bedroom, and at least five percent will be three-bedroom. So, you know, that isn't exactly how it's gonna be able to play down. It's a pretty, it's a pretty condensed develop, or pretty, pretty, pretty tight development. I don't know how you're gonna manage not shading the boardwalk and still provide parking and open space. Because I think there's a lot of competing goals there. I don't see how that will happen. But I do, anyway, you just aren't gonna be able to do all studios and, and make it, make it work. The RFP doesn't allow that. Also, I think that the RFP is requiring all very low-income housing, and I think that the boardwalk deserves a variety of housing, because it's the people's boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Hi again, Dustin Taylor. Yeah, I think the main hiccup I have, and like you explained, was the density. If you guys come to the space on Site Thirteen in particular, you'll notice it's pretty close, you know, our property line kinda goes there, and then it's, I'd assume there needs to be a fire lane or some sort of road, so the amount of distance between, that you can actually get a building and then get forty-five or however many units in that building, in that narrow spot, is a big building, and it's big and tight. And so as far as that particular spot, that seems like a, that's kinda like, my biggest hiccup is that, that, there's no way around that being big and shady, and just kind of a monstrous building in that size of space that is, like we were saying, trying to be open. So I think Renee kinda nailed it best when you were asking about, I think it's more the density issue in that space, not necessarily low-income housing, this income housing. Housing's great. I'm a huge fan for housing in Old Town, because yes, we've got a coffee shop and chocolate shop, and I love people who live there and walk there and come down, and we definitely need people in Old Town walking, so it's not, it's not a housing issue, like we should keep people from living in Old Town. By all means, we should have all those upper homes filled with people. It's more in that particular spot, just the density, and then to also then create that open space that allows for festivals and things that are in that. So that's the only unfortunate part to me in this RFP, and, and it's just the amount of houses that are tied to it. You know, it's like, let's, we're running out of space, so here's this last lot that we You know, it's like, let's, we're running out of space, so here's this last lot that we've got that's beautiful, and it could be great, and I want somebody to develop it. It's just that, with that requirement that's on there, you know, it's like this ticket that somebody, anybody wants to build on here, yeah, you can build a business, but you also have to build, boom, all this infrastructure that goes with it with all these homes. So that's just my concern with that space, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello again, Kenny Carsel, Security National. Just want to start off with saying that we strongly oppose this. We would love to see the city take more of a collaborative approach with private landholders. I think we could actually get a pretty good group of people together that would oppose this project and want to see housing done. We understand there's a need for housing. That's not our problem. It's just the placement of this housing. So just again, reiterate, we oppose this and would love some time and maybe some conversations. Yeah, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it over to Zoom. Althea? Christensen?
Yep. So I do want to say, I mean, private landowners, private developers have had decades to do something with this property and haven't done it. You know, the shading, I'm looking at the only other building that's really that close to the boardwalk, which is actually Bayfront One, which I think is three stories, two and a half, three stories. From what I'm looking at in aerial photos, it doesn't look like it shades the boardwalk that much. Yeah, I think that's a good kind of benchmark to go from is Bayfront One. And then the other thing I did want to ask about, kind of echoing what Leslie said, is I know during the first RFP that Link responded to, they had to redesign their buildings because it wasn't clear that they needed to have a, you know, Victorian or, you know, waterfront maritime architectural appearance. So I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the RFP this time, so that there's not that costly redesign, so that the developers know how they need to design it, you know, aesthetically when they make their proposals. Thank you.
Thanks, Althea. Colin Fisk?
Hello again, Colin Fisk with CRTP. As you all already know, CRTP strongly supports the release of this RFP for all the reasons that were discussed earlier this evening, so I won't repeat myself. I do want to bring up two small issues that I hope that you will address. One is that we would ask you to remove the requirement for the retention of twenty or more off-street parking spaces at the Sixth and L Street property, with the exception of ADA accessible and EV charging spaces, which I think are reasonable to retain. But requiring twenty or more spaces on the property will make any development much more costly and might make it just completely logistically or financially infeasible to develop there. And it would be a real shame if you were unable to find any responsive proposals because of that. I also think, as has been discussed this evening, the city's own, you know, parking study has shown that there is sufficient available parking in the area, so, you know, the requirement to retain that parking does, does not seem to be necessary. The second issue is the requirement for the coastal zone parking that was discussed is really the result of the fact that the current coastal land use plan is kind of out of date. And as you all know, the city is in the process of updating it, and part of that will likely harmonize the coastal zone parking rules with the inland zoning parking rules. And so we just encourage the city to work with interested developers, if at all possible, to ensure that the new harmonized rules, after hopefully adoption of the updated coastal land use plan, will apply to the building instead of applying those older outdated rules that are currently in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you see that phone number?
I can. Phone number ending in five-two-eight-eight.
Hello, can you hear me this evening?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Ken Sawatsky here. I did wish to make comment on that. I wanted to thank Miles today for his comments on your wonderful project that went before the supervisors. I always appreciate participation by the city on a wonderful project. I highly recommend that you listen to the contractors and developers who are speaking at this meeting. I myself am a principal in a corporation with a general engineering A license, and we can build all kinds of projects. But unfortunately, you may find that our costs have gone up thirty percent recently here. And I have a question for you. You're, I understand your development down by the bay, but the parking lot beside the, the facility where you're at right now, I want to ask, you might ask yourself, how many of you did not bring a car down tonight? How many of you took public transport, bicycled, walked? Because you're eliminating the parking that I've had to park three blocks away from City Hall before to attend things and go things. So I've just kind of questioned the conversion of these things. Until you get transit and everything in your area, these kind of developments, elimination of parking especially, that one right there, doesn't make sense to me. Your transit systems are deplorable compared to Mexico. People don't use them, and I really wish they would. You know, it's all, all a lot better for a carbon imprint, but we're, we're kind of a, we're a country place. People come from out of the area to attend these meetings and things. So I wish you'd look at it from that viewpoint and also look at it from the business viewpoint. I mean, most of their customers for a lot of your businesses are from out of the area. And if there's no parking, we just move on and we go shop strictly down at Costco or at the mall or something like that where there's parking. So eliminating parking, and even Mr. Fisk, I appreciate what he does there. But, you know, if, if, if you're coming down here and not bicycling, walking, or doing public transport, then I, I think it's a little hypocritical to eliminate the parking spaces. That's my comments on this for this evening. I highly recommend again that you listen to some of the prior speakers that spoke before me, get their, what they said. Thank you. Up to you to speak.
Thank you, Ken. And Caroline Griffith?
Good evening, Caroline Griffith. Very proud you reken by choice. It has been really nice to see the efforts that the city has been making to increase housing stock, especially for people who are low-income and very low-income. I fit into that category the majority of my life. And to, to see some of the proposals that have come forward from Link Housing for developments that have, they're attractive, they have green space, they have community amenities, they're close to services. It's just really wonderful to see the efforts that are going into actually providing quality, enjoyable housing for low-income residents who are the people who work in the restaurants in Old Town, who work at our grocery stores, who work in our hospitals. So I'm really excited to see this move forward and excited to see the proposals that come from some of these developers. I would like to echo kind of the concern from another speaker and from Councilmember Castellano, just to make sure that it's really clear if there are any design standards that folks are going to be held to, to make sure that people, developers don't go through all of the effort of coming up with these proposals just to have them changed to the point where it makes it infeasible to go forward with the development. So thank you for bringing this forward. I look forward to seeing what comes of this.
Thank you. Do you see anybody else on Zoom?
I do not see any.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council. Before we do that, I just had a couple clarifying questions. So what I heard earlier was that the North Side Road, for Dick Taylor, that that would be maintained. Is that still what?
We'll have to look into it. I can't, I don't know exactly the logistics of it. I would say to have a turnaround for a forty-foot big rig is not going to happen, but we would need to figure out some way around that. I don't know what size trucks they have or what that would look like, but we'd definitely look into it.
Okay, and then, secondly, there's been a lot of talk about density. Is there any wiggle room on the density, lowering the density?
What could happen, similarly to what happened with Link, if a proposal comes in where they utilize all three of the properties, and they chose to make some of the other properties more dense and alleviate some of the density on the C to F property, that's a possibility. We do need to meet the numbers and those numbers are associated on what type of density can happen on each of the properties, and that's where those numbers came from.
And it may mean an amendment to the housing element.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any comments from council? Comments or motion?
I have a comment about the density, because that's exactly what I was thinking. You know, I know it's a, it's a challenge to amend the housing element, but I think there's other opportunities out there for housing. It seems like things pop up all the time and new opportunities, so.
So I just want to make it clear, that would only have to be on our, so if a private developer came in tomorrow and built two-hundred, two thousand affordable units, that doesn't absolve us of our responsibilities for these properties. So I think what Principal Planner Getz is saying, similar to what we did as a part of this other update, is when we had different numbers coming in from Link, we had to go back. Now, if we can still meet what we promised, I don't think that's going to be difficult. If we can still meet the overall number that we promised in the housing element, we'd still be fine. But it doesn't allow for another private, and believe me, I've gone back and forth with HCD about this. And it's illogical to me, but that is the way that they regulate our housing element.
Okay.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I, I understand the, the reticence, the caution that a lot of folks are feeling here with the potential for change in, in, in this particular portion of Old Town that hasn't really changed in more than a few decades. But that being said, this is a request for proposal, and I'm going to support low-income housing one way or another moving forward. I, I believe one of our commenters had said something similar, that's how they grew up, that's how I did myself. And, and so I just have to have that, that frame of mind, providing, being able to provide that where we can. But we're still going through this request for proposal phase, and so it's not the final portion of it. And if this comes back and it doesn't match with the culture, or, or as one constituent put it, when I was out there, the patina of downtown, then, then I don't see how I could support that moving forward. I, I do appreciate someone bringing up that the Bayfront, Bayfront One is about three stories. And so that gives a bit more perspective when you take into consideration what it might look like. I myself can't get behind anything close to fifty or a hundred feet tall out there. But if the designs come back and there's something that, that can match, again, the culture of the Old Town area, I don't see why we would, why we would not move forward with it.
Councilmember Bauer?
I totally, I agree, and that's why I'm concerned about having these minimums that can't be met. You know, I mean, if they need to build up, then we're, we're making this like requirement that is not realistic, you know? So then it's like, well, why do we do this? You know, that's my concern, is the simple fact that if it's not feasible to build up because they have to drill sixty feet down for, you know, support for earthquake, you know, seismic retrofitting and all that, then why do we have it? Why do we have forty-five if it's not going to be feasible and we're all going to say no way? So that's why I brought that up, really. It's not about that slow income at all, the fact that I don't know if that's going to be doable.
Well, when I was referring to that, I was referring to the hundred feet. You know, I think that with, and I forget the laminate, there's new structure that doesn't require steel for you to go above four stories. It makes it much more cost-effective. Mass timber, that is now a part of the building code, which makes the cost to go up a lot less. But I think when you get into the hundred feet, that would be cost prohibitive because you would be doing steels, you would do pilings, things like that, where I think if you do something that's in the three to four-story range, you're looking at floating slab, mass timber, those type of things that aren't as costly.
Councilmember Castellano?
I have some, perhaps two specific thoughts around this, but so, you know, I, I would propose kind of separating out the RFPs and I'm just going to say what I support. I'm not making a motion at this point yet, sorry. But for the C to F lots, extending the RFP for a hundred to a hundred and eighty days, and then for the other lots, ninety days. Also for C to F, you know, I would personally like to see twenty-five, minimum twenty-five percent of open space, no more than forty-five feet, which is basically four stories, with housing on the second and third stories, and public access spaces on the first and fourth stories. And then a point system, adding ten to fifteen points specific to public space and creating a connection and, and access and relationship to the other buildings in Old Town. That, that's kind of where I'm leaning right now with that. I think that there are other opportunities for housing. And so I, I also, and, and I, you know, I support and promote housing on this site, to the extent to which we're trying to put housing on Site One. Also, I, I don't know that it's, with, with how close we are to the water, I don't know that it's architecturally feasible also. So that's, I, again, you know, to Councilmember Bauer's point. So that, I just want to say, that's kind of where I'm leaning with that in particular. And I think the Fifth and D site, especially, you know, when you consider that there's a lot next door, I think there is opportunity for more housing than we're certain, than we're currently allocating that could affect our Rita numbers and could also affect our thinking. There's, you know, as, as we know, the city is also, has recently acquired a property off of Myrtle that, you know, I think should be considered for housing as well. And I know there's other potential developments or possibilities, like the sites near the Adorni Center. That's just, those are my thoughts right now.
So if I could just make some clarification, the, the building adjacent to the Fifth and D lot is going to have some Sydney fit in issues and won't be hashed out for a very long time, likely years. So while there's a possibility for that, doing it in a way of somebody wanting to purchase it would be very cost prohibitive in the state that it's in right now. And as far as adding sites to our housing element, at this time, I wouldn't recommend that until we went to the next housing element to make sure that we had those available if and when we need them going through another process. I don't even know if HCD would allow us to do something like that right now after we just updated it.
I wasn't necessarily saying to add them to the housing element now. I just think that they, they should be considered in our thinking at this point. And maybe that means, you know, extending the RFP for longer. I don't know. Everyone's like, staff's glaring, but it's okay. I do appreciate your work and everything you've been doing to put this forward, and I understand, again, that the tight space we're in as a city.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I would support the idea of extending the RFP as, as, as it's been proposed.
One, one element of agreement and many others yet to be determined.
I think, from my perspective, I think that would be okay, but I am going to ask Principal Planner Getz to weigh in and make sure that we're not running afoul of, of HCD and our own housing element with that modification, just that one. And I, I do have a comment on the other suggestions that you made. I just want to counsel a little bit. But please weigh in, Principal Planner Getz.
So if it's council's desire to extend the RFP timeline, we're happy to do that. My concern is that we need to be sure that we remain in compliance with our housing element, and that's to get folks under contract before the end of twenty-twenty-seven. And so if we're looking at nine months, And so if we're looking at nine months, 180 days plus 90 days, we're almost to 2024 by then, so, just throwing that out there.
Did you say 180 days you wanted the C to F out for?
I did.
Six months?
Yep, that's what I said.
About 120.
Just saying that six months, if we're talking full design, may be warranted, but six months is a long time to come back with a conceptual design, it's significantly a long time.
I hear you. Okay, so we've had comments, we've had questions, we've had public comment, and now we need a motion to continue this conversation, or to let it flat. Councilmember? Okay.
I'll make the motion to continue the conversation.
No, make a motion.
That's what you said.
Well, what I meant was, you know what I meant. So if you, we need a motion on the table and a second to continue this conversation, is what I'm saying. Uh, Councilmember Bauer?
I would like to hear what you said with the, your considerations for amending the motion, if you don't mind.
Okay. I mean, I could put what I said into a motion in order to consider, continue the conversation, all right.
I, I, I did just want to caution that if we're making significant changes that are not in line with what our current zoning and building codes say, then I think we will absolutely run afoul of HCD. So if we're, if we have a building in zoning code that says, on this particular lot, you can do a particular thing, and then when we put our RFP out to ask for affordable housing, which we are required to do, but we're going to limit this particular space in certain ways that are different than our zoning and building code, that does not, in my, in my mind, we could run afoul of our own housing element, and I would, I would caution the council to consider that very seriously.
And, and I would also add that from a practical standpoint, a private developer requiring a public space would be difficult. Having open space is a different thing, or communal space, or something to that, but to say, private developer, you're going to provide an open space and maintain and operate that open space for the public, I think could be challenging. Because of liability issues associated with that for the private developer.
Well, but from the coastal act, there are going to be some requirements for access to the coast through the sites. So those, those will also be there.
Councilmember Castellano?
I, I'm just going to push back just a little bit, because as we all know, this is a very significant decision for housing, for the city, for, you know, and I agree, you know, with the speaker earlier who said, you know, this is a gem of a site for the city, and I do not think that the intent of our relationship with HCD is to hold our decision-making process hostage and make us feel like we have to, you know, I mean, if anything, at this point, I am more tempted to make a motion to have a study session on this, so we can really get into it and spend more time really analyzing our possibilities. I, just because I, I think, everyone loves study sessions, I knew it, no, but, you know, just because I think that like, this is the first time since months ago that council has had the opportunity to talk about this. And, you know, it is now 9:30, I mean, I'm fine, whatever, it's been a long day, let's go, but also, you know, I, I do think that there's, you know, I mean, or I'm, I'll just make a very specific motion, and that's okay too. But I would, I'd like to hear a little bit more from council, and then I, I would be happy to make a very specific motion also.
So would you care to make that motion, and we'll get a second, and we won't vote on it, we'll have more conversations, so that we have something on the table?
Is that calling the question, are you calling the question?
I will call the, I don't call the question.
Okay, you can, you can call the question, it's okay, okay. Oh gosh, which one? I got two battling in my head. We'll try this one first. I will make a motion to extend this item to another meeting where we can specifically focus on this item.
You have a second?
I'll just, from the RFP standpoint, I think, would six months end when?
Monday.
So, we were under a timeframe for the housing element to get something out either under contract or in RFP within six months of it being adopted. And so, per the council, when you guys adopted this, that was what was agreed upon. And so, right now, we're looking at that date coming up. If we push this forward, I can't speak for HCD, but I think that they may have a problem, Principal Planner Gatz?
Great to have that reminder.
I would second that.
For the sake of conversation, we can always have a substitute motion, and vote on that.
We can vote on this middle.
Should we, should we need to?
So, we have a motion, and we have a second, so now we can carry on with conversation, and actually, Councilmember Contreras Deloche, then Councilmember Moulton, and then Councilmember Bauer. There we go.
I'd like to wait on my question comment, I would, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Councilmember Moulton?
I was actually just curious, Councilmember Castellano, what advantage you see in lengthening the RFP process? Just that initial, the initial proposal process, not the design?
I think for a proposal of this kind of magnitude, and what, what I would hope would be imagination, but also capacity, I, I think it just might take longer than, than what we anticipated to get enough good proposals that we can really consider. You know, I would like to see a, a wealth of really great and exciting proposals versus us having to choose from things that we didn't find to, adequate enough.
And a question to the staff, then, does that jive with your experience with gaining proposals?
I think 60 days would be considered short, I agree. Six months, it may give us more time to do some more solicitation, but six months for a private developer to come up with a conceptual design, I think is, is a long time. And it would definitely be adequate, I can assure you that. And there's nothing, other than that nine-month period of having somebody under contract, that, that would be cutting it close. But let's just remember that if we do go with this, that we're really going to be cutting it close.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
I think maybe a substitute motion would be to authorize the release of, of RFP for affordable housing projects on Site City Four and Site City Five. And then we can continue C through F for another time. So that way, we can hopefully make HCD happy, get a couple of proposals out for 60 days. Those are, I think, are, are properties that we're, we're not really discussing at this point, right? We're more concerned about C through F. Just an idea.
There's still the six months unless we can meet between now and Monday, correct?
But I'm saying, to approve of an RF, put out an RFP for two of ours, that wouldn't be good enough with a 60-day period for, for RFPs.
Yeah, we need to get an RFP out by Monday to comply with our housing element, and it has to be for any parcel or any site that isn't, or that we're not expecting to soon be under contract. We, we can, once the RFP is out, and we decide on it, on a timeline for that, I mean, we can add time to the RFP. I just strongly encourage that, we need to get it out by Monday.
So, I'll just say this, Councilmember Castellano's request for the, for the specifics of her amended motion, for the most part, is fine. The, the length of the, the time out, while very lengthy, is, is okay. The request for open space is going to be part of the requirements. I don't know if it's, is it 25%?
We didn't put a percentage on it, it was just a requirement, and then look at what was in the charrettes.
Yeah.
Might be helpful to hear them again, so we can...
The only one that I really had concern about is...
As a point of order, was that a substitute motion that you made, or were you just suggesting that that could be a possibility?
I'm happy to make it, but it was a suggestion.
It was a suggestion.
Yes.
So we can carry on with the conversation, go ahead.
So yeah, the only concern I is, is requiring a public space of a private developer. I don't know what that arrangement would look like. It would be, it would be difficult. I think that the city would have to take ownership of that public space and provide maintenance of that public space, and it would still be retained by the city. I don't see a private developer saying, I'm going to put this together, and I'm going to put a park, or a grassy area, or a pond, or whatever it may be, and say that it will allow access for the public to be there and take on all liability associated with that.
Unless it was a hotel, maybe. Councilmember Moulton?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out that it's 9:34.
It is, and we have a motion on the table and a second, and so I realize that we should make another motion, but we can't make a motion until we've kind of figured this out.
Okay, thanks.
But thank you.
Motion to extend?
Can we motion to extend in the middle of conversation?
Since we don't have a motion that's
We do, we have a motion in a second.
We can take, do a, by consensus, I would suggest that we extend the meeting past 9:30 to till you're finished with business, perhaps.
So do you just want thumbs up?
Yes.
Thumbs up, friends.
Very good, thank you.
Carry on. I don't know that I was mid-conversation, but... Who was mid-conversation? Were you the one that was talking at that moment?
Before we had to extend.
You'd proposed an alternate motion, but you hadn't necessarily proposed it. You were deciding whether or not that was an alternate motion, or whether you were just throwing that out there.
Suggestion, but I'm happy to make the motion if that's what's necessary.
So we have a motion in a second.
The current motion on the
Thank you.
floor is to table this item to a feature meeting for further discussion.
So, is there further discussion? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
To clarify, I guess, my issue is that I'm fine with Site Four and Site Five, and I'm not with Site 12 through 14. And so, however we, whether we extend it, or whether it's, you know, moving forward with Four and Five, or bringing back, bringing back 12 to 14 for discussion, I just, I, I, I don't want to be in a position where I'm voting no on something when two-thirds of it is something that's a yes for me, but this last thing is, is not, so I guess just to clarify my position, why I'm listening to your motions, and trying to figure out what to support.
Uh, Councilmember Fernandez?
Could, could we then instead substitute the motion, so that way we can approve Four and Five right now, and then potentially continue a conversation about CNF at this moment?
I think that Councilmember Castellano could revoke her motion if she wants to consider the alternative motion that's been suggested, but, but not made. That might be the easiest way to, to move forward. If that's her pleasure, she's welcome to do that.
I can revoke my motion.
And make another motion.
I can make another motion. But, I mean, I'm happy to hear more from other council members, also.
Did you have any other prevailing issues with Sites Four and Five, I guess?
Sorry, I, I didn't hear what you said just a second ago, with the, with the, the sites other than C to F?
Correct.
No.
Okay, because then I would like to make the motion, and I guess I might need help with that, is moving to adopt the, the RFP process for Sites Four and Five. And then continue our conversation on CNF here, or C through F.
I don't, if there's a desire, if, if there's an understanding that that conversation, I don't see if you're going to further it, maybe you'd want to have that conversation and see if there can be something to come up so that we can get them all together?
Sounds like we're being held up by one particular site here, or at least three parcels. If we can get the others approved right now, then that's out of the way, and we can focus on what the issue is.
Totally understand that, where we're still going to be under the same problem with the Monday deadline and being able to...
Right, but what I'm saying is we continue the conversation right here.
I think the council, I think the council understands that, we can only advise, but the council's obviously, you know, with, with that understanding, I think, can, can move forward, and Councilmember Fernandez, your motion is, is fine. If you're looking to me, I, I think your motion is clear.
Okay, okay.
So is that a motion you just made?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Is there any further conversation about this particular motion?
Oh, I just want you to say it again more clearly, please. What's the motion?
Approving the RFP process for Sites Four and Five. So that would be Fifth and D, and, I'm blanking on the other one, I apologize.
Six and L.
Thank you.
But you want to separate out C to F to another day, to another meeting?
Because as soon as we're done approving that, we're going to continue this conversation right now about C through F.
We could just continue the conversation right now anyway, we don't have to vote on them separately if we're not going to change it to another meeting.
Right, but at least we've gotten that out of the way.
It's for our brains.
I don't understand, I'm sorry if I'm complicating this.
Would you consider a friendly amendment to encourage additional units at the Fifth and D site?
Absolutely.
Would you? Okay, so did you capture that? So we have a motion and a second, do we have any further conversation? So please vote on this portion.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you, and we'll resume our conversation on C to F. Councilmember Bauer?
Well, I think what Councilmember Castellano is
Hold on, guys.
is thinking about is zoning code, right? Can we some of these ideas that you have, can, we're not, we're not zoning code unless you memorize it, I, I haven't, you know? I mean, so I think we're looking for, to have that discussion with all the facts in place, right? What does zoning code say towards public space, towards, we know what Coastal Zone says about access, it's, basically, it's got to be guaranteed. But with our zoning code, can some of the things that has been suggested fit without us getting into trouble with somebody? That's what I'm seeing as a major issue here.
So there are landscaping requirements, there are open space requirements, all of those things. We don't have an exact number of what those are, but there are requirements in our zoning code for this to do that. I think what the city attorney is concerned about is if we restrict that further or expand it further, that we are somehow going to run afoul of HCD because we are not basically following what we should in order to promote housing.
And run afoul of what's been agendized as well, so, I'm only, I'm only advising caution, I'm not saying absolutely not.
And if we were to do something where we wanted to make this a requirement in the coastal zone, and do it as we should, and through the zoning code process, it would take a text amendment in order to do that.
Councilmember Castellano, did you have your hand up?
I just have a question. If that's okay. The question is, whatever we propose, or, you know, however this moves forward, if we get back for proposals, and we just don't like them, what is our...
So, we discussed that before. If we just don't like them, we have every right to refuse all of them, and go through another process again. So, and there's also another option, which is a possibility. If you are re-ranking and re-numering the amount of points scored for certain things, we could say, "We want X amount of this, or X amount of that", and then add that to the scoring criteria to make that an important or priority as a part of the RFP. But if we go through this process, we get all these proposals back, staff comes back to a recommendation to council, and council does not like it, we have complied with the housing element, and we would be eventually redoing another RFP and going out again.
So, what I'm hearing you say is that regardless of what we do tonight, at the end of the day, at the end of the proposals, we have a choice to say no. So, if we were to pass this RFP today, at the end of the proposals, when they come in, we could still say no, we could still make those changes that we wanna make. Is that what I'm hearing?
100%.
100%, is that clear?
And one other option, I think, that we have too, is that we can negotiate with folks who respond. If they don't provide something that we think is gonna fly, or that council likes, we can go back to them and say, "Hey, would you consider doing X, Y, and Z?" And then, it's up to them to make that decision. If they do, great, we could move forward. If they don't, well, we figure out what to do.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche, I always forget your...
I need a nickname. That's fine, RC D, it works. So, but to clarify, it wouldn't be, like, it wouldn't be the units themselves that would be changeable. That would still be the requirement, is a minimum of 45, 45, 5, right?
Yes, unless, like what we discussed previously, if somebody responded to all of them, and there was more units that say it was more dense on Fifth and D, and they made up for those there. We could likely do that. We'd have to, like we said, go back and update our housing element. But if we can accommodate the numbers that we're supposed to get overall, then we could go back and update the housing element.
So, is it... So, help me understand, 'cause I wasn't here when this was passed in November, and I've kinda gone back and read, but is, were we the... Was the council the one that determined that it was gonna be 95 units on this parcel? Or who's decided that that's where this, that 95 units have to go on this, these three parcels?
It's part of our RENA, which is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation that we assigned for total.
That we have total, but for this parcel, I'm asking?
It's based on each parcel and what the capacities were. So, when we looked at floor area ratio, and what we can get out of them, this is what we came up with, based on what our zoning codes allows, what the zoning is on these properties, and that's where these numbers came from.
So, it's not a state agency that's requiring us to have 95 units there? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
The 95 units is a part of the overall number that the state is requiring us to have, yes.
But is not required for that site?
Not specifically, but based on the floor area ratio from other places, this is what we came up with.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments, or does someone want to attempt a motion? Councilmember Castellano?
I'll make a motion. I think it's ordered in my head. Okay, I forget the site numbers. I'm just gonna say C to D, and you can transfer it to whatever the site numbers are.
C through F.
C, thank you. C to F.
Wow, we're only approving one parcel.
Long night, y'all. I would like to make a motion to... Basically, with the staff recommendation, but with extending the period to 120 days, creating a requirement for a minimum of 25% public space, and adding, sorry, no more than 45 feet tall, with the first and fourth stories being available for public access via businesses, or whatever. So, basically residential on the second and third stories. And 15 points awarded for... Relationship and congruity with other sites in Old Town.
So, just a point of clarification, you're adding the points, but also saying requiring. Are we gonna say prioritize?
Sorry, I gotta take away points.
No, 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 you can, the points are fine, just the requiring part, you're saying that we're requiring a 25% public... So, they respond, we say you're non-responsive if you're not doing this. What I'm getting at is the... What I'm getting at is if we require it, and they can't produce it, then we're likely not gonna get a response. It goes back to the private and public part of it.
The more requirements that we have, the less options it provides to potential developers to provide something.
Sorry, could you say that again? Just maybe a little louder, I'm not hearing...
So, my understanding was, is that in order to get to what you're desiring was, without requiring it, was to make it a higher priority? And so, that when you put these in there, people can get too close to, or comply with all of those things, they'll get a higher point number? If we say we require you to have 25% of public space that's open to the public, and we require the first and fourth floor to be visitor-serving?
Yes, thank you for that language.
And if we do that, that is going to extremely limit what we're gonna receive in return. What staff was suggesting is making those high priorities, and putting a point total towards them, so that if they can get to that, that it ranks higher than the other proposals.
Understand. Let's see, so, changing my motion to include... Well... I mean, I still kinda like it, actually, as it is. I'll just see if someone seconds it, and then see where we go from there.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I had a question.
You have to have a second before we discuss.
I'll second.
Okay, now, go ahead with your comment.
You had made a point in your motion about there being a 45-foot height limit, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, when it was explained to me earlier, it sounds like that might have been an onerous process that we would have to go through with our land use.
We're not saying you can't do that.
Right.
What we're saying is, is that is not in our zoning code. It's allowed to go up to 100. And so, we explain the concerns about doing that. It's up to council if they choose to go down that path.
I'm done.
Did you go to explain what that path entails?
No, I heard the Coastal Commission earlier was involved, so, thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I just wanna make sure I understand, and to confirm that if we, if other properties... So, we have to have things under contract by 2027, is that what you said?
To stay in compliance with our housing element, yes.
To be under contract for those additional 95 units, or...
It'll include all of them, but yes, 95 included.
Okay. By 2027, so, three and a half years from now. And in order to update this with other properties that we've recently acquired, or will acquire, we would have to go back and update our entire housing element, is that correct? So, we probably would be looking at that anyway?
Why?
Because wouldn't we plan on developing some of those properties, potentially?
Yeah, we can. We don't have to put them into the housing element. That would be staff's recommendation. I mean, if council chooses to do that before the housing element is updated, that's all well and good, and we can do that. Point being is, if we come up to 2027, and we utilize those properties, we're not gonna be able to get credit for them in either of the housing elements, either in this one, or the one in 2027.
So, I am new to this. How obnoxious is this housing element process? It seems like it must be, because I'm looking at people's faces, and I can feel the vibe in the room, and it's just super bad. Can you help me understand?
And when we went through the public process last time, we had very similar comments that we had here today, and we basically fought HCD for six months, and got through that process.
Fought HCD?
Literally fought them.
They have to certify our housing element.
And they didn't want to?
Not until we did...
Made drastic changes to it.
I see. I mean, I don't really see...
And that fight resulted in a lot of those properties being lost that we had approved prior to that. So, it was very disadvantage, wasn't advantageous for the city at all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
And thank you, everyone, for the amount of time this is taking. I'm curious if, you know, we move forward, we get proposals, we don't like the proposals, or we, you know, and we go out to proposal again. In the meantime, let's say more houses get built, or more houses get put into contract, does that give us space to make adjustments if we move forward?
It goes back to the same problem that we had before. Like I said, if a private developer came in and built all of the units, we're still obligated to utilize these properties at these numbers, and reaching that 314 with these properties.
Okay.
So, if, for example, Fifth and D comes in with 40 units, instead of the minimum of 20 that's required, we can't reduce the numbers on C to F by those extra 20 units, without an amendment to the housing element?
Unless it's the same person. Isn't that what...
No, even if it's the same, we could do it. Even if it's the same person, we'd still have to update the housing element.
Yeah, 'cause there's minimum numbers, dwelling units assigned to each of the lots.
Great.
I don't think that that's prohibitive. I don't think that, as long as we're in compliance, and we can demonstrate that, I don't think that's gonna be a six-month drudgery, like we went through when we swapped properties, and they told us that properties that were approved are no longer approved. I don't think that's gonna reach that level.
So, did you have your hand up, Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I'm just trying to, I guess, get a handle on, because it seems like that at various levels, and for different reasons, that a lot of us are concerned about this project, moving forward as it is currently written. And I, you know, I don't wanna run afoul of, you know, HCD, or create these other issues, but I also don't wanna just move forward with something because of that. And I don't think that that's a, I don't think that that's a good reason, when we're trying to balance the interests of, I, can I, I just wanna finish this off, but I don't wanna, when we're trying to kind of balance these needs and concerns from our community, with our needs for, you know, fulfilling our housing, both for, just because it's a need for people that's desperate, as well as, you know, trying to fill these requirements, and also that staff has, you know, made this great effort to get us as this, I forget what it's called, but that acknowledgement for what we're trying to do with housing in our city. But I, and I feel all of that pressure, but I don't want that to be the reason, that we're like, okay, well, then we have to move forward with this, as it is, without really trying to find a way to balance, or take that other stuff into account. And that, that's my concern. I don't feel that that's an adequate reason to move forward with something when there's concerns as it sits.
So, I just wanna make it clear from staff's level once again. This is a commitment to putting out an RFP, and solely an RFP. If there are standards that are not met when we come, and even if staff recommends a project, council has every ability to say, "No, we don't want that to happen." What we're doing now is putting out an RFP. Hopefully, when we put out the RFP, we have somebody like Link that comes in, and comes up with something that's very satisfying for council, and council approves that. If they don't, then we reject them, and we move on, and we go through another process. We are not committing to this process, other than putting out an RFP, and complying with our housing element by putting out this RFP.
Councilmember Malton?
Just a comment that I'm in support of moving forward with the proposal as written, rather than the alternative motion, with the exception of possibly extending the RFP submitting timeline from the minimum of 60 to something like 90, or even 120. But I'm happy with the way the RFP is written, the requirements therein, also assuming that we can make sure that Dick Taylor has access to their loading dock in a reasonable way.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the table, we have a second. Assistant City Manager Powell, would you please read the motion?
Currently, the motion is to authorize staff to send out the RFP for... And I also don't have the sites, but C, D, F. And that is extending the timeframe to 180 days for response.
120.
20 days, okay, thank you, makes a difference. To include in that RFP a requirement for 25% public space. The building can be no higher than 45 feet, with the first and fourth floors being visitor-serving, and the second and third floor to be allocated residential. And extra points, 15 points awarded to, that they retain, or they have relationship, and are congruent with the other Old Town properties? That is what I have.
Did you use the word "architecture", or did you use the word "properties"? That's different. Okay, so, that's the motion, that's the second. Councilmember Castellano, did you have some final thoughts, or some thoughts? No? Yeah, it's been seconded.
And just to say, I would consider a friendly amendment to, in regards to the open space as a determinant versus points award.
Councilmember Malton?
Principal Planner Getz? Hi. If we had a building that was limited to 45 feet, and then only the second and third stories were available for housing, would that allow enough room for the housing that is, the units that are required?
I was just mentioning that. I think that that's going to likely increase the footprint, at least of the building, because you'll have to have 45 units in two stories, as opposed to 45 units in three or more stories. So, we might get a smaller footprint, possibility for more open space, more public access to the coast, by allowing either taller buildings, or not limiting the uses above the first floor.
By asking for the top floor to be publicly, or visitor-serving, then that means the building needs to be wider, and therefore might have, block more sightlines, or make it more difficult to see our waterfront.
I can't say 100% that that would be true, but it kinda seems logical.
Yeah, and it would, it would take up more space, if you're gonna meet the 90. 'Cause the height is set at 45, so if you keep setting it at 45 across the board, depending on studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, if you're limiting it to the middle floors, and having the top being visitor-serving, you're obviously gonna be taking up more of a footprint of the property, and have less open space.
Councilmember Fernandez first, and then Councilmember Castellano?
I'm good.
Oh, no, you're good? Okay. Councilmember Castellano?
I would consider amending, can I amend my own motion? With it, I mean, without being questioned?
As long as I agree with it. As long as I agree with it.
Um, to a hundred and twenty days, and then with fifteen points awarded for, um, twenty-five percent, uh, open, for open space, uh, fifteen points for, um, a limit of four, basically all the same parameters, but versus, uh, points versus requirements of fifteen points per parameter. I can repeat them.
Raising the total points to a hundred and forty-five, or, or still keeping that within a hundred?
I think you'd have to raise the points at that point.
Okay.
And do you agree, Councilmember Fernandez?
I do.
Okay.
And if that's the case, I'd like to call the-
Does the person who seconded, uh, approves the, oh, oh, you did, okay, sorry.
Like to call the question.
Absolutely. So.
Hundred and sixty, yeah.
We have a motion and a second, and the question's been called, so we're going to vote. You can make one quick comment.
Okay, here's my last comment. Uh, ninety-five units with the potential of being a hundred feet in the air, which I'm sure is like, unlikely to happen. Um, and if I read it, the RFP correctly, or read this correctly, with, uh, one space per unit, it said, and a option to purchase more spaces for seventy-five hundred dollars per space, I do not think is in the best interest of that area. And I do think we should take more time and do something different, that's my opinion.
Can, can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask, and I'm going to ask if Assistant, uh, City Manager Powell will also weigh in, but, uh, is there an alternative motion? I, I, I fear that if we vote on this and there isn't an alternative motion, the, the matter dies.
Um, she pulled her first motion, so.
I understand that, if this motion doesn't pass, does the matter die, or is there an alternative motion that could be made after?
Uh, you could make an, I think, per our rules, you can go for another motion, the discussion continues.
Got it, thank you.
So, please vote. You're going to have to help me on that one.
Okay. Yes, okay. Two yes votes, Councilmember Moulton, Councilmember Bauer, and Councilmember Contrares Deloche dissenting, motion fails.
So now we'll carry on with conversation? Sure. Does someone have an alternate motion that they'd like to bring forward?
No, I was pointing to you because you had your hand up.
Councilmember Bauer?
Well, and I think it was a perfectly fine motion, to be honest, but I, I fear, I fear having to revisit the zoning code, zoning, it, I feel like that's a, a path that's going to take us to multiple meetings, to try and make that fit. You know, to try and make what you're proposing fit within, that doesn't fit within the existing rules, you know, but I, I totally agree. Um, but I just, I, I fear that it's, it's problematic in the long run. Sure, go ahead, I'll, I'll yield the floor, go.
Uh, i- if, if we made the same motion minus the height requirement, so that way we don't have to go through that process, and then, uh, Councilman, or Councilmember, uh, Deloche, you had, you, you had made the comment that, uh, the parking is still of, uh, some substance to you, and so if we, if there were a motion that removed that seventy-five hundred per, that wouldn't do it for you?
Yes, you may.
It's not the seventy-five hundred per parking space, it's the issue to me, it's the combination of, and I think this is just, I, I, I think looking at this parcel as a means to satisfy our entire thing, and by putting a very high-density ninety-five units, plus, in, in there it says one parking space per unit, which is an additional ninety-five spaces, and then they could purchase more, to me is, we're talking about a very big development with a very big parking space.
So, I, I, I may misunderstand, but when you say purchase more, what that's a-
It just says in there, it says, that for seventy-five hundred a space, so I just assume that's what-
They don't have to have the space.
They pay seventy-five hundred so they don't have to have the space.
Yes.
I see.
And that's a lot by the zoning code, so.
Okay, well, anyway, I, I'm still going to, it actually still, what's bothering me is, I think it is too high-density and that, and then a massive parking lot as well, so.
Okay, and then just for my clarity, the, the parking that's also counted, that would be off-street parking as well, correct?
No, so I mean, that's, as it deals with the residential, the first floor is going to have to be visitor-serving, they're going to have its own parking requirements as well, which you cannot do in lieu fee for, correct?
No, you can.
Oh, you can, okay, so there's going to be other parking requirements, depending on what that visitor-serving is. If it's a restaurant, there's certain requirements for parking, if it's a hotel, there's certain requirements for hotels. Whatever those are, those will still be a part of it, on top of the residential.
Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Right, so then, what we're doing is, we're eliminating some parking lots that have thirty spaces, and then we're going to be putting one that has at least ninety-five minimum, not including, unless they pay the seventy-five hundred dollars for each parking space to get rid of it, but for that visitor-serving area, it will also have to have parking as well. So, just, I, I guess to be really clear, my concern is, uh, lots of housing and big, big parking lot.
So there also is the possibility that a developer could choose to use density bonuses and, uh, request a waiver or, sorry, concession or incentive to waive all or part of the parking.
Councilmember Fernandez?
You got your hand up.
Were you first? Go ahead.
Okay, um, I wanted to go back and utilize the same motion without having to repeat it in its entirety, minus the height requirement.
Okay. It's a motion by you right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, could you read that for us, please?
Alrighty. This will be to authorize staff to send out an RFP for C to F, extending the timeframe to a hundred and twenty-five days, uh, award, uh, points, uh, fifteen points for twenty-five percent public space, fifteen points for, uh, well, this would be, this is where I'm a little confused, because the first one had the visitor-serving on the first and fourth floor, uh, that was, and then residential on the second and third, so would you want visitor-serving on the bottom and the top floor, and residential spaced anywhere in between, since you don't have the height requirement on it any longer?
I could work with that, yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, fifteen points to, awarded for relationship and, um, continuity with the other existing buildings in Old Town.
Yes.
For, that would be for a total of a hundred and forty-five points.
Yes.
All right.
And, and I believe the, the RFP process was a hundred and twenty days.
Uh, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I also, did, did you want public space, or did you say open space, uh, Councilmember Castellano?
I think that's what went back to the points, because you had taken out the requirement and said you'd be amenable to it being point-based, correct? Yeah.
And I believe it was open.
That's how we wound up at a hundred and forty-five.
But public space and open space are two different things.
Oh, right, you'd said public? Yeah.
Open?
Public.
Public, that's what I, okay, got it.
Okay, thank you, so we have a motion, and we'll need a second for further conversation?
I'll second.
Great, and you have a comment? You had your hand up earlier, do you have a comment?
Um, it was answered.
It was answered. Okay. Any further comments, Councilmember Moulton?
Uh, I have a comment, could you read the, the part about design, how is it phrased?
The design, like?
The architectural said?
Uh, it was for relationship to other building, and, um,
Continuity is the word, yes, I'm, um, I'm opposed to requiring or even bonusing continuity in architecture, I think it's, um.
Okay, would you like to make a friendly amendment?
Uh, well, my friendly amendment would be to remove all of those things except for potentially extending the RFP timeline, so, no.
It's more like a substitute motion.
Okay. Let's vote.
Are we voting on the substitute motion, or the?
A substitute motion?
Did, did Councilmember Fernandez's motion get seconded?
Yes.
Oh, it did, okay.
Okay, so did you want to propose a su- a substitute motion, or did you want to vote as is?
Does it make a difference if, if we, should we just vote on this first, and then, uh, I'll make a different, and then I'll make the other motion?
Depends on how it goes, I don't think so, I think it, you should probably substitute.
Yeah, go for it.
Substitute.
Okay, well, then I will, uh, propose a substitute motion to, uh, adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Eureka, authorizing the release of the request for proposals for affordable housing projects on city-owned properties from C to F, with extending the RFP submission timeline to, uh, a hundred and twenty days. Hundred and twenty.
And eliminating everything else.
Yeah, everything else as written, except extending the, uh, the request for proposal timeline.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So, we have a substitute motion and a second. Please vote.
You're voting on the substitute motion first. Okay, two yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez, Contrares Deloche, and Castellano dissenting, motion fails.
So we'll go back to the original motion, and again, could you, would you be willing to read that just one more time? Just once more, just once.
I'm starting to get a little silly, obviously. Uh, this is a motion, um, authorizing staff to issue the RFP for C to F, um, with extending the days to a hundred and twenty days for response, uh, fifteen points added for twenty-five percent public space, fifteen points added for visitor-serving on the first and top floor, and fifteen points awarded for relationship and, uh, continuity to other Old Town, um, buildings. Congruity, okay, congruity, thank you.
Okay. So please vote.
All right, we have three yes votes, Councilmember Moulton and Contrares Deloche dissenting, motion fails. Or motion carries.
Motion carries.
Sheesh.
All right. So, it's currently ten fifteen, and we're going to take a three-minute bio break, and we'll be right back. Add them to an agenda for the following meeting, which leaves us to future agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on to city manager reports, hearing none, we're going to go on to council reports, brief council reports, very brief. We're going to start with, Councilmember Bauer, we're going to start with you.
Thank you, yeah, I, not a whole lot to report, past couple of weeks, and, uh, I'll be going to a CalCity's Board of Directors meeting next week, so I'm looking forward to seeing how other people are dealing with their housing issues and everything else, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, met with REDEC, had a presentation from Core Hub, which runs through Humboldt Area Foundation, and, uh, they did a presentation on offshore wind community benefits. I didn't know where to put this, because we're coming towards the end here, but I would like them to be able to provide that same presentation here if possible on a future agenda item.
We just skipped this.
I know. Uh, we had our two-by-two with, uh, Eureka City Schools, and I-
Is your mic on?
Oh. Lovely, sorry, so, should I just repeat everything I did? Okay, good.
We're good.
All right. And, uh, yeah, I know I've been out, uh, for the last few weeks handling some family business, so I'm just getting back to, uh, responding to constituents, and there were some thoughts and questions about the recent approval of the Stokes property over in, uh, Hend- over near Henderson Center, and I believe I talked with you about that earlier today, City Manager, so I'll follow up with you about that afterwards, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Castellano?
Um, I attended a HTA meeting, there's some really great things going on with streamlining fares, um, so that it's just going to be way easier to go from one bus to another, and like limits on how much you have, can spend per day, to just make it easier. Um, I attended a SURF meeting, a Community Economic Resilience Fund meeting, um, continuing to hold housing meetings, uh, and, let's, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Moulton?
Hmm, thank you, I attended a two-by-two meeting with Eureka City Schools. Uh, the gym is coming along great, there's a virtual tour at eureka citieschools.org, and they're also asking folks to participate in the local control and accountability, uh, survey, they're trying to compose a portrait of a graduate, and they're encouraging everybody to go to eureka citieschools.org and participate in that, that was very enlightening. I also did a tour of EPD today, I'd gone on a ride-along before, but today I got to tour the department, top to bottom, got to see dispatch in action, uh, check out their very nice gym, it was very fun, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Yeah, um, I also got to go out and do the tour just, um, right after our last meeting, I started it, then had to go back and finish it at a later time, um, and was super impressed, it was really cool, I got to meet their hamster, um, at the police department. And then also just meet our dispatchers and who we got to see tonight, and then, um, just, uh, get a grasp on just how many things they're involved in and everything that they're doing. I got to meet with Commander LaFrance today, and we talked about Mist Uplift and some of the other programs, um, that they're really active in, that was a great meeting, I super appreciated him, it's just incredible, and got to find out all the cool things that our mayor's been involved in, and, um, how she's been really supportive. Um, let's see, oh, I attended a SURF meeting, and then I attended a CalCity's general meeting and reception that they did up there in Arcata. Yeah, and Lesley was there too. Um, and, um, that was actually really cool, speaking of things that I would love to be able to, at some future time, bring back, is talk about something that Arcata is doing, and that they made a presentation on, their Community Ambassador Program, and they had a lot of really cool statistics about that, and how that's impacted things in a really positive way for their downtown area, and lighten the load of their police and that kind of thing too, so, um, that was really cool. And then, highlight of the week was, I, um, got to go out with, I mentioned them before, that nonprofits that's, um, feeding people on Sunday, making hot burritos. Um, I got to go and help them cook, they are using the kitchen that's over at the same place where our warming center is. Um, and then, just trucking around Old Town with them and getting to hand out burritos, and people were super excited because now they recognize the burrito people, so, that's a lot of fun.
Great, and with that, it's a gavel kind of evening, we're adjourned.